Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of council for November 12. Just before we start, I would like to pay tribute to the Honorable Marie Sinclair, who passed away Monday, November the 4th. He was born just north of Selkirk in 1951. He had a distinguished career, beginning as Vice President at the Manitoba Métis Federation, where he became friends with Howard Pauli, the Province's Attorney General at the time. It was Howard Pauli who encouraged Marie to attend law school. He was a prominent figure in the justice system for over 25 years and became the first Indigenous judge in 1988. He was Chief Commissioner of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission of Canada, where he investigated the residential school atrocities. From 2021 to 2024, the Honorable Marie Sinclair was appointed as a Companion of the Order of Canada and recognized for outstanding achievement and merit of the highest degree, especially in service to Canada and to humanity at large. He was dedicated to reconciliation between Indigenous and non-Indigenous Canadians. Marie was a resident of St. Andrews and actually lived in Ward 4. There are not enough words to express how he impacted all of us, and he will be forever remembered. On behalf of myself and council and staff, condolences to all of this town. Thank you. I would like to call on Councilor Mureki for the land acknowledgement, please.
I would like to acknowledge that the rural municipality of St. Andrews is located on Treaty 1 territory, traditional lands of the Enishanawee Cree, Ojibwe Cree, Wambo, Dene people, and the national land of the Red River Métis. We respect the spirit and intent of treaties in a treaty making and remain committed to working in partnership with First Nations, Inuit, Métis people in a spirit of truth, reconciliation, and collaboration.
Thank you. Item number three, be resolved that council adopt the agenda as presented with or amended with all additions. Does anybody have any additions or amendments? Okay, so as presented, can I have a mover, please? Deputy Mayor Doran Ross, Secretary, Councilor People Corn, all in favor?
I have one comment.
Yes, Councilor?
I will be removing myself from Variation Order VO 78-24 when that comes up. I'll be removing myself. That's 893 Hall Road.
Please write it down, back there.
I can't hear. They're too noisy over there.
Just tell them to write it down a little. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, thank you. Councilor Hartz is by Zoom. Now we'll start the planning. Okay, now we'll start with the planning process, with the planning applications. The hearings will proceed as follows. The Red River Planning Staff will present the application. The applicant will make a presentation on the application. Those registered in support will make a presentation, and then I will call upon those opposed to make a presentation. The applicant will then have the opportunity to respond to comments or concerns raised by council members or presenters. At the end of each presentation, council may ask for clarification but will not enter into debate. All person speaking must address the chair, and at the end of the presentations, council will close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, there will be no more presentations accepted on the matter. Council will then consider each matter separately and provide a decision. So, thank you, and we'll now proceed. First, we have item number 4.1. Be resolved that council give first reading to bylaw number 4044, being a zoning bylaw amendment as presented.
Would you like me to present it?
Yes, Ms. Ferguson is here on Rock River.
Thank you, Chair. Property in question is located on Breezy Point Road, and the applicant is seeking to rezone a portion of the property, A40 Agricultural Limited II CG Commercial General Zone. Here we have an air photo of the property. It is quite large. It's over 320 acres. It's divided by PTH number 4 and has frontage on Breezy Point Road. The portion of land in question is shown here under the CG in yellow, and that's approximately 44 acres. The purpose of the rezoning is to facilitate residential development, a 10-unit residential building as well as a child care facility. There will be a requirement for a conditional use later on, but we are recommending that first reading be given that will allow for more time in research to be conducted on the application and a public hearing will come forward. It will be a joint application for both the conditional use and the rezoning. Happy to answer any questions if there are.
Thank you, council. Do you have any questions for Ms. Ferguson? Thank you. Be resolved that council give first reading to bylaw number 4044, being a zoning bylaw amendment as presented. Can I have a mover, please? Councilor Mondor, Secretary. Councilor Mureki, any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
That matter is carried. Open the public hearings. Be resolved that council hereby open the public hearings for the following planning applications scheduled for November 12th. Conditional use number 252024, conditional use number 26... That might be incorrect. 252044? Oh, sorry, no. 262024. Variation order number 7824, variation order number 9624, variation order number 10724, variation order number 10924, variation order number 111024. Can I have a mover, please? Deputy Mayor Doran Ross, Secretary. No, Secretary. All in favor?
Aye.
Carried.
Need to move this microphone a little bit closer to audio.
Yeah, our first item is, sorry, basically, is conditional use number 252024, 18 Yorkville Crescent. Would you please proceed?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Nice to meet you. So, um, thank you for that. So, this is a conditional use application number 252024, which involves the property located at 18 Yorkville Crescent in St. Andrews. The purpose of this application is to establish a crematorium in general industrial zone.
I'm sorry. Would you be able to speak up because it's recorded? So, we're having a hard time here.
Not at all. For sure. You don't want me to repeat, or we're good?
No, we're good. Okay.
So, as noted before, this conditional use application proposing to establish a crematorium in M1 general industrial zone, as you can see. And here we have an air photo location map identifying the subject property and it was trading the surrounding area in industrial park zone. And here we can see the applicant's site plan that illustrate the location of the subject property with proposed crematorium structure and parking lots and approach from the Yorkville Crescent Street. And here is a map provided by applicant to show a distance from the subject property to nearest dwellings to the north. I hope you can see those numbers, yeah. And here we have some elevations to see the structure itself of proposed crematorium. And conditions of approval. Should council wish to approve this application, the RRPD recommends the following conditions. This conditional use is limited to what has been presented. Any further changes, replacements, additions would require a new approval. The applicant obtains all required permits for Red River Planning District, municipality and province. By honor to obtain an annual business license, a license from municipality, and no parking will be allowed on street on Yorkville Crescent, only on the subject property. Also, the deceased persons and remains must be unloaded within enclosed area of the proposed crematorium facility in a manner that ensures no public or otherwise external visibility. Applicant to submit all required plans to municipality for review and approval in accordance to developing agreement. No building or site development permit shall be issued until the submitted plans have been approved writing by municipality. And by honor to comply with all other requirements of developing agreement that register the certificate of the titles. So, this is all that I have for that conditional use, Madam Mayor. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions? With the planner? Okay, here we're seeing none. I'll call on the applicant, Ashley Newton. Would you like to speak to your application?
Hi there. My name is Ashley. I'm a licensed funeral director and embalmer. I've lived in St. Andrews since 2009. I've owned and operated alternate cremations since 2019. We continue to grow and grow each and every year. I am the sole owner. I don't have a big corporate sponsor of alternate cremation. As we've grown, we've needed to acquire property to construct our own crematorium. For that, I've been searching for years for property that's both, according to the Cemetery Act, it needs to be 200 yards away from any dwelling, and it also needs to be zoned appropriately. I thought I finally found some property at 18 Yorkville Crescent in the industrial development. That would be ideal for my purpose. And in keeping of, you know, wanting to be a respectful neighbor and wanting to be respectful for everyone at the time, I'm worried that there's going to be a lot of concerns that are brought up, so I'd rather just wait until the end to address those individually, if that's okay. Thank you.
Just a moment. Council members, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Aye.
Councilor Steve McCorn?
Is the regulations that follow a crematorium, that's just the Cemetery Act that it falls under?
Correct.
Okay, and in terms of all the regulations that, obviously, those are all going to be met is what's in the act?
And there's also the Environmental Protection Branch of the provincial government. They've already issued approval for that. So, it's kind of a combination between the environmental branch of government have to communicate to now the Consumer Protection Office that now oversees the Cemetery Act. And so, the individual who approved my permit for this in terms of environmental has already communicated to the individual, they're reading my application now.
Deputy Mayor Doran Ross?
Okay, um, I think you answered my question just when you said here, so the regulations for emissions is done through the province, and you've already,
Correct.
and you've already gone past that already?
Yes, it was part of my application from a Stu Vashada engineer with the Senior Environmental Engineer with the Environmental Rules Branch. I do have a copy, but here if you'd like to review it, I could send it up there.
I don't think that's necessary if you've got it there already.
Okay.
Because I've got a lot of opposition here in regards to emissions. I'll make sure that...
Yeah, I do. And so, that was the first thing, because I thought that would be the major hurdle. I was making sure that I had that environmental. So, that was the first thing that I tackled, and I got it to April 12th of this year. So, they've reviewed the emissions that I submitted for my particular units or my crematorium that I proposed. They also reviewed the distances from dwellings. And so, that was all approved as well. And there is a process where, in order for them to approve it to be in operation, they have to come and witness the first cremation, and they'll do a stack test at that time and measure the emissions to make sure that we comply.
Councilor?
Oh, it was not on you?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, Councilor. No. Um, there is another crematorium not too far away in the airport. Is that incinerator the same as what you're planning to put in?
They have a much, much larger unit, which has been re-rebrecht several times, as you can do. So, every 1,500 cremations or so, you have to have the unit serviced. So, it's perfectly serviceable and fine. My unit that I intend to install is going to be a much newer, more modern unit. It's also going to have what's called the Empire System, which is an automated system that controls the temperatures of the two burners. It also controls the air intake as well to optimize, basically, the combustion of the two burners so that emissions are drastically reduced. Using the system, Matthews Environmental, as they call it, a emissions event is when there's visible smoke from the crematorium stack for more than 30 seconds. Using the system, they have a less than 1% rate of that right now.
I have a question. Sorry. When is most of the business done?
When is it?
Yeah.
Generally, like, I have an office in St. Paul, and that's where I meet with families. Generally, we're not going to be doing cremations in the middle of the night. There's no reason for us to do that. We are a very low-volume crematorium. We're going to be a very low-volume crematorium. So, we need to two cremations one day and then none the next. They're all going to be within daytime hours as well.
Okay. I'm good. Sorry.
Councilor Mureki?
Yes. Ms. Newton, do you have a valid license from the province to operate a crematorium?
The licensing of crematoriums is done through the cemetery's board. So, and there's currently not a crematory operator's license that's officially recognized in the province of Manitoba. There's a penal director's and embalmer's license, or their individual licenses. There's a premises license for your general establishment, and then there's the crematory license. And the crematory license comes from the, I have to procure basically all the permits that I'm here today to get so that I have my conditional use, my zoning is in place, and my environmental, which is in place. Then the cemetery's branch will approve it.
So, as of right, how you don't have license?
I don't have a license crematory, no. No, that would be impossible for me to have at this stage.
Okay. Would I be correct in saying that crematoriums are a significant cause of air pollution?
They're actually not as significant cause of air pollution as they're listed. They have approximately half the emissions in carbon monoxide emissions and particulate emissions as a diesel truck compared to a wood burning stove. Cremation is 0.6 pounds per hour of operation, whereas a wood burning stove is 3.5 pounds per hour of operation. That's in terms of carbon monoxide emission.
Okay, the numbers I have is a crematorium puts out 300, correction, 535 pounds of CO2, that's a carbon monoxide, nitrous oxide that stays in the atmosphere for about 100 years, sulfur dioxide, fine soot, and mercury. To be frank with you, it also puts out 46 other different pollutants.
Can I just ask?
A diesel truck puts out, in the neighborhood, the new ones put out in the neighborhood of 150, 163 grams per mile of CO2 emissions.
I just wanted to go back. You quoted 535 pounds?
Right.
For, that's more than most bodies themselves weigh.
That's right. Is that correct?
That is more than what most bodies weigh. Yes, that, so that would be...
But you're also weighing in the gas, too.
But that would be impossible to create more matter than is there that is being combusted, right?
Okay, but is that correct? Am I correct?
I'm going to say that 535 pounds per cremation is absolutely incorrect.
Okay, but would you agree that it does produce carbon monoxide?
It does, and I've paled some comparison to other industries.
Nitrous oxide, sulfur dioxide, fine soot, and mercury.
And all of those things come from diesel emissions as well in greater numbers. It's something that you're not going to find in cremation. Emissions will be volatile.
I would disagree with that because the newer trucks have the...
And the audience. I have the human health risk assessment for diesel exhaust right here. Trust me, I also have other publications. So, diesel exhaust is considered so harmful that Canadian Lung Association right now has a, they're doing a campaign to make all school buses electric because they don't believe that children should be subjected to the harm of diesel exhaust.
Would you agree that cremation industry in BC is moving away from crematoriums and going into an alternative type of, in, I want an alternative type of disposing of bodies because of the environmental damages of the cremation processes? Is that correct?
If by alternative, are you referring to alkyhigrulosis?
No.
Then what alternative are you referring to?
I'm referring to, I don't know the exact name of it. It would be the one to take the body, the body is put in a basket. The basket is buried in the trees put on top.
So, that's green burial.
Okay.
So, I, as far as I know, the cremation rate hasn't been reduced in BC due to the people wanting to go over green burial overall. There is some interest in alkyhigrulosis, which is water cremation, but in my opinion, that is not more ecologically friendly because of the water consumption involved in it. But I would say, no, there is not going to be a reduction in cremation rates because of the uptake of green burial. And green burial is currently available at all Winnipeg cemeteries. You don't have to have a casket. You can be shrouded, be buried, but people aren't doing that.
Okay, Councilor Slaker? Or Councilor Mureki? Do you have more questions?
No.
Let's get the Councilor Slaker.
Okay, Ms. Newton.
Hi. My only question to you is, once it's up and if you get it up and running and everything, do you plan on, like, subleasing, sharing your facilities with any other, you know, places? Or, you know, teaming up with, say, for example, Gilbert, that's the only one I know, across sharing your crematorium with anyone else?
Absolutely not. Offering trade cremation services is something that I am not interested in in terms of the, within our industry, the politics of it and having to chase vendors or people that are using my crematorium for funds, which has gotten from crematorium to some difficulties for, yeah, barriers. I don't want to be in that business. I just want to have my crematorium to serve the families that I take care of or that alternate cremation takes care of. And that's something that I would be willing to have as part of the conditional use is that I don't do any trade work for other funeral homes.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other members of council that have a question? I have a question. There's some of the concerns we've received, emails, there's been letters of opposition filed. Is there an older that comes from, generally, like, of a modern crematorium, there should be absolutely no older because it's complete combustion. The reason that you smell wood burning stoves, so from a chimney or something, is because that's incomplete combustion. In a crematorium, there's two burners. The second burner will ignite the smoke, basically, so that those inorganic particulates will be drawn out and brought out of the smoke of those emissions.
The only thing that you should be seeing out of the stack of a crematorium is a heat ripple, and there should be no older at all. If there is an older, then there's definitely either inexperienced operator or there's something wrong with the equipment. There's people who...
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we've heard from the applicant, while there's a large crowd. Is there a spokesperson for the group? Because I want to acknowledge all of council. We, your letters of opposition, your emails, your petition, we accept your petition as information. We see it's on our agenda, like, in our agenda package, the letters of opposition. Do you have one spokesperson that is speaking for? Yes, sir. Your name is? Are you Mr. Gill?
Yes, sir. I can address council for a moment.
Who are?
I'm Peter Genakis. I'm counsel for Tornado Hallers, one of the opponents to this. And they've asked me to, I'm a lawyer, and they've asked me to assist them. But I believe they have a number of presentations that they've put together that they would like council to hear. I understand council's objective is not to do the same thing over and over again, but that would take us all night. And I don't think anybody's probably in the mood to spend their evening here in the, in the municipality other than how lovely it is. But I think they would like to make their presentations because they each have their own specific question that I would like to follow up with, with a review of, you know, conditional uses and what I see the problems to be, if that's fine.
Okay, and could you state your name? Because these are on the sheet here.
I told earlier this morning, my understanding, I am on the sheet.
Second on the sheet.
Oh, thank you. Yes, you are. Thank you. Okay, yes, it was just that because of all the in-depth concerns we had raised in writing,
Yes.
we didn't want it all duplicated, because council has read all of the information to have a repetition and duplication.
And I appreciate, I don't think that's what anybody wants to do. I think they want to put their points across, and each one of them has their...
Yes, and it's a public hearing, so everyone will...
And there will be some overlap, obviously, but I think that's just part of the process.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Genakis. Okay, so you're now, you know?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm the vice president of Tornado Hallers, and we are a $60 million business. We have invested $5 million in the land right next to the crematorium that's proposed. I also have some binders that I'd like to leave out to you guys, so you guys can have a little bit of reading. We have went out the crematoriums in Selkirk up to the neighbors there and got their views in written, like, what their views are having a crematorium next to them. Also, also, there's a petition in it where all the lots are signed, like, all the owners of the lots that have signed in there. Also, there's a map in there showing which lot has signed for opposition, proposing the crematorium next to us. If you guys don't mind, I would like to come out and give you guys, give you guys the binders that have...
That's right.
One on there is petition that's been signed by all the lot owners that are in the area. And there's also a map attached to it, but with the neon color is the guys that signed it. And the ones that are non highlighted are the guys that did not sign it. There's also a blue highlight. That is where the crematorium is. And I guess you guys already know that. And the next page is the total crematoriums in Manitoba that are registered. And there's two in Selkirk that are already registered, and there's St. Andrews. And there's one non-registerant in Selkirk. And there's one in BC in West St. Paul. There's already five in the area. Why do we need a sixth one in 20-kilometer radius?
I think you forgot the one in Boggs, as you're in, technically.
Yeah, they're all within the 20 kilometers. I'm mentioning the one that are within the 20-kilometer radius. And there's also Google reviews from different states having crematoriums next to businesses. You guys want to read it out? And there also on the last page is personal reviews planted on the business that are next to the crematoriums. And there's also phone numbers on there and the business names on there as well. If you guys want to call around and maybe find out. And we have about 130 employees. And we're actually in a situation that we now, we're getting concern from all our employees saying that there's a crematorium next to us, and we cannot work for there. And what's the point of us having a $5 million investment in a terminal where we can't even have employees?
Um, we want some groundwork, thank you. Okay, all of these that you've taken from Google reviews. Okay, this is located. How old is their equipment?
I have actually not gone through it yet. I haven't researched enough how, how old their is. But the, um, but the main concern is, um. There's already five, six crematoriums there, well, five in mine own, there's a sixth one in Boggs, where do we need a sixth one in the area within twenty kilometers? There's the one in West St. Paul is already bankrupt and out of sale. And it, you will.
Every new system there.
And it's all the new system there. It was recently built.
Yeah, yeah. One in St. Anne's.
Okay, thank you. Do you have anything further to add?
And, and just want to let you guys know the one in Selkirk has a brand new, uh, uh, I don't know what they call it, a brand new unit to, uh. I don't know how to say this, but a brand new unit, but, um, their views are still there that, you know, the people that are right next to the bit, right next to the crematorium and saying that. There's, you know, there's smell and there's, there's black smoke coming out and they could smell people burning, so. I don't want to be, I don't want to be showing up to work every day, you know, and having the smell. I don't know how do I say this, but people burning next to me, right?
Yes, I know. Um, but as you've heard from the applicant, it's brand new, high-tech equipment, um.
But their views I have are, the one in Selkirk has a brand new, uh, unit.
But, you know, if it's comparable to the unit that's being, see, that is all regulated by conservation environment, um. Under the Cemeteries Act, she explained that's all like council doesn't do that, but that's all licensed and highly regulated. But okay, thank you. Council members, do you have any other questions for Mr. Gill? Okay, Mr. Slakers?
And I also want to mention that, uh, we are all here to, you know, not, not all of us, they could be spoilers here. But if you guys want all of us to come up and speak, you know, it's going to take a long time, so we got Mr. Here, he can represent, he present us, right? I don't know if you guys want to, want everyone to talk or.
Well, I'll be calling if there's anything rude to add.
Okay, alright.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I apologize, good. Yours, Suak, did who? Um, twenty-four, twenty-six, year at Pope Crescent. Is there anything you wish to add? Did you wish to speak?
That's all.
And I got to.
I'll ask at the end if there's anyone else, okay, because some haven't signed in. Okay, thank you. Uh, Miguel. Sorry, I can't read the name. It's one stone Fort Row.
Yeah.
Is there anything you'd like to speak to?
Uh, I kind of agree with everything that he kind of explained, um, I kind of come and kind of get my, my spiel in. But, um, yeah, I'm, I'm also property owner in the, uh, in the area, they have a industrial law, law owner as well. Um, and yeah, I just have people turns kind of what they covered, but, uh, I'll just read out what I, what I have as well. Uh, so, so, yeah, uh, basically health risks, that's kind of a big concern of mine, uh, missions and things from the crematorium could, could harm air quality and whatnot. Affecting our, our residents and, uh, and business, and business owners and whatnot, um. There's also, uh, emotional discomfort, uh, residents and businesses may feel discomfort or discomfort living and operating near a crematorium. And, uh, and affecting the customer, uh, perception of the area as well, um, also. Also stigma as well, the presence of a crematorium could create a stigma that diminishes the appeal of the entire area, discouraging potential customers, clients and investors from doing business nearby. And compatibility with business needs, um, it may be off with the type of businesses that are in the area which may rely on a family friendly or community oriented image. Just a few things that I want to cover, but, uh. I guess that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions? No, thank you. Um, Vinnie.
Good evening, my name is Vinnie Gill.
Could you say your last name?
My name is Vinnie Gill.
G I L?
Yeah. I am the hiring manager at Tornado Hallers Limited, and I'm here at the behalf of all the employees working over there. The petition online signed by the all our drivers, mechanics and the office staff, it was not submitted earlier, it's an online petition, first of all, I need, I will share that with you. If that's okay.
It's different than the petition.
Yeah, it's the online petition by the employees of Tornado Hallers. Basically, we, uh, we have like one thirty employees, drivers and mechanics and it's, it's signed by all of them.
Okay.
So if I'm allowed, I'll, on record, I'm going to read this petition and this was not submitted, I'll not take much time. With employees of Tornado Hallers, including office staff, mechanics and drivers, are voicing up our opposition in the planned construction of a crematorium on the Lot Eighty. Located less than hundred meters from our workplace, this facility would stand directly across our terminals. Where we work long hours daily from morning until evening, we believe this project would significantly and negatively impact our working environment. As well as our physical and mental well-being. The construction of crematorium just close to a business facility is alarming for multiple, uh. Alarming for multiple reasons. Crematoriums despite advancements in filtration technology have repeatedly been associated with the complaints about the odors, noise and particular emissions. Affecting nearby business. For instance, a logistic company in Springfield, Illinois situated near a newly constructed crematorium. Reported that lingering odors frequently led to discomfort and decreased morale among employees. Despite the crematorium's installation of state-of-the-art technology, additionally, a manufacturing plant in Ontario, Canada faced the employee turnover due to a similar issue. After a nearby crematorium opened, as the staff reported feeling uneasy about the daily presence of crematorium adjacent to their work site. The presence of crematorium directly in front of our terminal threatens to compromise our work environment and our health. Despite claims of emission control, these concerns extend beyond technology. They reflect the reality of working in the close proximity to a facility handling and of life services. Such as environment creates a psychological swing and discomfort that impacts the productivity and morale. And it's, it is unfair for employees to be subject to these conditions at their place of work. Now is the critical time to act as this project has not been yet broken ground, we urge local authorities and decision makers to reconsider this plan.
Okay, thank you.
That's all, thank you.
Uh, council members, do you have any questions? Oh, one more, Mr. Slaker.
Um, so many names on here, you got Adgest of Toronto, Quebec, um, I'll open this place, so. Your everyday worker.
Sorry?
Somebody addressed, there's a chat in your.
Yeah, I'll tell you, that basically.
And Ontario, Quebec.
I, I'll explain that. The reason for running this online petition is nearly we have hundreds of drivers. They're on the road, that's why they can't make it away, that's why we send the online petitions to all of them, and they are over the road all the time. At the places where they might be, somebody from Ontario signed it, it might be in Ontario at that time.
It takes up the location.
It takes up the location where the driver is, by the way.
Yes.
Yeah, GPS.
I think, okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, um. Carriage in Dillon, thirty-seven, Yorkville.
Evening, council. Uh, my name is Jas Dillon, I'm from Winnipeg and, uh. I have bought one property which is a seventeen Red Rocks Lane in this business park. And, uh, when I have heard this news, so I have like my thoughts and which, like the plans which we are working from last one year. So I was, uh, have done deep study like how it will impact, uh, on the, the business which we are bringing to the St. Andrews. Which, which, uh, I would bring, like, when we bought, uh, this land in this, uh, business park. So we obviously, we go to the, we have done our, like, three things, like what are the designation, what other businesses can come here? And there was no designation for crematory over there. So that's how we choose this place and we have invested here and we are bringing some rental units where we will bring the. Like we have talking to the small car garage, so they are bringing two car garages here and one cabinetry guy, so we are bringing, we're working on the six units. So which will be the rental and couple jobs and all that, those people will come here. But now having, uh, this, uh, place and this business very close to our location. So it will affect us badly and I don't think so, so the people will feel comfortable like having rental these units or. Bringing their business at this place. And now as like, I won't take much of time, like, because lots of people, maybe they have shared their reviews already and more to say, so. So there are a few things, uh, on the environmental which are already talked and we can't deny that, uh. This place is going to affect environment badly. And the future and what are the other provinces are doing, they're eliminating these kind of things and they're working on the other alternatives. To protect our environment, like harmful gases, as you said, you have done your study, so I won't take much time, so environmentally it's not good for this community or this business park. And locationally, if we, if we see that business park, lots of people have invested, bought the lands and they're working on so many different projects. Somebody is bringing some manufacturing, somebody is bringing some trucking terminal, but having this place in middle of all those businesses impacting this whole business park very badly. So that would be the, another consideration. And the people who are living around within few meters, like workers, obviously they're a factor, but even the people who are living around, they will be affected badly while they're having the. The negative vibes and all of that. We need, uh, I, I'm not defining here, we need a crematory in St. Andrews or not, but what I'm strongly. Saying we don't need in this business park because this is affecting the whole businesses around in St. Andrews. Like, for example, Tornado Haller is biggest business, I would say, at the moment, which is running in this business park. And they're bringing the employment to the St. Andrews, so it will generate, like, for example, if somebody is working in St. Andrews, they will. Looking to buy the house in St. Andrews, so that's how they will develop the more property taxes and that's how the. R M's will be developed, the people, but if, if the businesses will be doing in this business park, because I would say this is the biggest. Business park it brought into the St. Andrews in past ten years, and if this would will, th- this thing will be here, so it will destroy those things and the people will run away and. Nobody will in, invest in this thing. And on the crematory side, I believe we need some peace, if we need the place, we need some peaceful places, like the. By the riverside, away from the businesses, lots of trees, by the golf course, where the businesses are not there, like, for example, the one place on the McLeary. If you can see, that's the biggest crematory place down and, and they have no businesses close by, I would say, like a couple of kilometers on each side. But this is the, I've been the best part, so that is the biggest thing I would say, which your council will consider and considering about all the businesses like us. Who have bought and who are planning to invest and bringing some future businesses into St. Andrews.
Thank you. Councilor Slaker?
How many years ago did you buy your property?
Sorry?
How many years ago, like, when did you buy that property?
I bought last year, in twenty twenty-three.
Any other question?
Can I ask Mr. Ferguson a question?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Ferguson, could you put that map back up again and it showed all the lots and where the crematoriums were?
Last one?
Sure.
Last one?
There, there you go.
That one, thank you, just for mental ability. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Charman, twenty-seven, Yorkville. Could you spell your first name for the record, please?
It's R I P I K, it's Rithik Sharma.
R I T I K?
Yes. So, good evening, council, my name is Rithik Sharma and I am a general manager for Tornado Hallers. So, first of all, we are at twenty-seven Yorkville, and as you can see in our map, we are just right across the new funeral home. So basically, when I came to know about this, like, what we hold, especially the meat, food products and all other bakery and, uh, let's say, protein and fresh product. So the main concern which I came across the area is like we have graders, the food sitting in our yard sometimes for a couple of days, three days, four days. So, as came across the odor of the. Odor, uh, odors or the fumes coming out from there, the fresh meat, it's kind of. That absorbs the smells, odors very fast. And every time we have like a meat inspections across the borders, once we are shipping the product to the U S and all the stuff. And another thing is like, we can have the several refuses for the grade, if our customers came soon. Once they open the door of our trailer and they can smell the odor. And that's going to be cause of several refuses with that, it's going to be the one time, twice, three times. But once at a time, our customer is going to reach out to us, figure out like what's going on, and if they came to know about like there's the funeral home. Which is causing all these problems like odors and all the stuff, they're going to turn down the, on tracks with us, we have not the business with that. And moreover, eh, like losing, uh, the, both the funeral homes, right? We, everyone has lose our clothes once, once at a time, we know about the mental trauma, emotional trauma is. So basically, we have our drivers living for the trips, like for, they are five days on a road, six days on a road. They came from home prepared with the, with their mindset that they're going to be in a five days on a road, they came, they came from the. But whenever they are going to be crossing, as we are just across the street, right? Whenever they're going to see the, the emotional. Thoughts of the people, they're going to be crying, they're going to be different kind of mental states, right, over there. People are going to cry for their loved one and all the stuff. So once the drivers are going to see that, no one's going to be there by having mind by. They're going to be sort of putting, promising in trauma. And they can lose their willpower of doing that, and on the other end, like, uh, our facility, that's going to be twenty-four by seven. So we, we are going to have twenty-four hours of office staff over there. People are going to work there overnight, their drivers are going to leave for their trips overnight, like two, three, four A M, and the, that's going to create a scary time for them. If they are just going to cross the funeral home. And we personally meet up with the drivers every time, most of the drivers bring me with the same concern, that how they are going to live in the middle of the night, once this thing happened. And another thing is that like. In St. Andrews, like it's, uh, we are trying to create more and more job opportunities over here, but once this thing is over there. People will hesitate to apply for the jobs at your Tornado Hallers, we are going to lose the employment as well, and suddenly the current, the, the, the current employees as well as Mr. Gill. Already showed you our petition, no one is happy with that, everyone has their own doors, so regarding all this, I think so they should be stopped.
Council, do you have any question, Ms., uh, Council Marick?
You're building a new building there?
Yes.
Okay, from the second story of your building, you could probably see the smokestack.
Smokes, yes.
Of the crematorium, could you not, probably at the same level?
At the same level, yes.
That's it, I want to make that point.
Yes, and another thing, like, uh, if we talk about, about the food products and the storage and all the stuff, yes, but like, we are trying to build a cross-stop facility over there. Where the people can have their stuff cross-stop from one trailer to another, and it's the same thing, like, the smokes, the fumes. Whenever we are going to cross load the stuff, that's going to cause like a lots of food going on. And if anyone offered me the food, which is like a smoke of the odor of ashes or something like that, I'm not going to have that food.
Any other question? Pastor Mariki, you're good?
No, I'm done.
Okay, any other further questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Plus, Dylan, do you have anything new to add? Is there a jazz? Maybe I'm saying the wrong.
He already talked about it.
Seventeen Red Rocks Lane?
Yeah, I was there already.
Oh.
Maybe we missed the name.
Oh, wait a minute. Then who is? It's P.A.R.A.M.G.I.T. Dylan?
I'm from Dylan.
He has the language barrier, correct?
I might add, you all write like doctors, Dylan, or prescriptions?
No, he's not, like, he's strongly opposing it, but he said he's.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we got that. Nineteen thirty York, uh, thirty Yorkville Crescent. Do you have anything new to add?
Is he here?
Uh, the last name begins with an R, that I can just make out R.A.?
R.A.I.
One? Oh, you'll have to speak up, we can't hear you.
In work?
So you're Jagdi?
Yes, ma'am. Jagdi. Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, my English is not that good, but I try my best to explain you. I'm on thirty Yorkville, it's just a little step from that, uh, this lot. Um, I think they are saying only two cremation in a day, but when they get busy, they start at nighttime also. And they, and they burn out the bodies on the cardboard, like I as well, when, when they get uh, less money for the people because I have a design, work on this.
I'm sorry, but that's not factual, that's your own opinion, I don't.
But I will, I will tell you the story. I was thinking to put a mill over there.
A what?
Milling. Milling, food, uh, food industry, uh, like a wheat mill.
Oh, milling, okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I can't hear him, like I wanna.
If they, if they, if it is a, like, you give me the permission to build this thing, then I'm not doing that. Like, not, not putting food industry over there, that I'm sure. Thank you.
It was about putting in a milling uh, business, okay, wheat milling. Zepal Sandhu, uh, twenty-seven Yorkville?
Can you, can you?
I.G.B.A.L.
Yeah, that's me.
So it's I.G.B.A.L.
My name is Zepal Sandhu. Hello, Council, I'm there. Uh, I know she's gonna bring something up about the exhaust tubes of a diesel truck. I'm not sure how much of a deep, uh, uh, research she has done so far. Uh, this is what I do for living. I sell freightliner trucks. And emissions, especially NOx, the NOx you get from, uh, burning a body is way more than getting a NOx out of a barely new or a new Cascadia, that's what I sell. It's zero, almost zero percent. And through a body, it's, you can tell about twenty to thirty older style diesel trucks. That's what it does. So I don't know where she's gonna come up with the number, but this is what I do for it.
Is anyone that Council, Council Mariki?
Yes, the numbers I have was seventy grams of CO2 per mile. Does that sound reasonable to you?
Uh, depends what kind of a technology and so these new trucks have DPFs and def exhaust tube. And that's probably on all the other diesel cars as well these days. And there's almost zero percent NOx.
Okay, so would you say seventy grams per mile is an accurate number?
Very close. Yep.
So are you here to say that all the trucks that tornado hauling are brand new?
They are. I've been selling them trucks since twenty twenty and I've replaced all their older units with brand new trucks.
I want to add to this, all our trucks are brand new. They're all twenty, higher than twenty twenty-two. We have nothing over than twenty twenty.
Thank you.
No questions?
And all our trucks are still under warranty in there. They go back to leadership.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Aman? That's here.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Aman Mutharu and I'm the owner of a trucking company called Mid Canada Freight. I have these lots right beside the same lot, the crematorium is gonna come. So I'm currently the neighbor of that lot. Uh, I've already filed the application to, I have five lots in there. It's called eight York, ten York, six York, twenty-four York, and twenty-six York. And I'm coming here with the terminal and I've already joined all these six slots to make one lot. And if we're gonna approve this application, I'm, I think I'm gonna have to rethink my decision of coming here. So this is my idea. And I agree with everything with Mr. Gill and everyone else has said.
Okay, thank you. On here you've got, you say six lots, but you've signed in for six, eight, and.
Uh, he's actually my partner and he signed for other two. His name is Gursevak Singh Sidhu.
The second one.
Okay, thank you.
What question?
Council, I'm ready.
Where are you operating out of now?
Uh, we just got a rental property in Centreport. And we have all the, you know, waiting on the process to, from BDC, we have a, um, you know, we're gonna get financing done from them. So it's almost like more than a year and a half wait. And they are just wanting to see our financials for this year. So once our financials are done in December, then they can approve us for, uh, starting the building process and then we'll start our process from there.
Mm-hmm. What made you move to Saint Andrews?
Uh, we bought this property, uh, about a year and a half ago, but the only thing that we made here, you know, it's a really, uh, reasonable pricing for us at that time when we bought it and it's, uh, that's the only reason, because in Centreport, like per acre is like eight hundred thousand dollars. And for here, we got it like around three hundred thousand. So that's the, uh, that's our main goal. To bring all of our business here and develop Saint Andrews in future as well.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Just to clarify, so you haven't applied to the RM for anything yet? You're still just getting it all put together?
Yes, we have, we had five lots. We have already initiated the process. Uh, as you can see earlier, it was five lot plan. And right now, it's, it has changed to only one title, because we are, we were gonna build a building on, uh, on the, I'll tell you the number on the lot.
I, I get that, but you haven't, you haven't filed any paperwork with RPD or the RM?
We, we are waiting from the BDC for the approval and they have requested financials and we go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nineteen twenty-five Yorkville?
That's for you. Can I speak from here or?
Sure.
Sorry, guys. Good evening, Council. And being an employee at tornado haulers, I do business development for them and it's the emotional trauma that the crematorium brings to the uh, the actual, uh, business park over there. It's, it's going to be concerning and it's going to be very hard for us to function from the office when cremation is, uh, going through, right? So it is going to be really hard for us to function as a, as a group and as a team during the process. So yes, I disagree and strongly, uh.
You're in opposition. Any other members have any question? Raji Singh, twenty-seven Yorkville Crescent?
Good evening, everyone. I'm working as a tornado holder. So we are working there at twenty-four seven. Every day. So it is not easy for me to work in that type of environment. If that location is near to us, as we like, we are working in future on the second floor, our new in our new bakery. So it's not easy for us to work in that type of.
Council members, have any question? Thank you. Amrabin Singh, twenty-seven Yorkville Crescent?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Amrabin Singh and I'm working as a planner in tornado haulers. I'm from last, uh, two years I'm working with them. They are really great. And they are making enhancement with us. And their enhancement is our own enhancement. And we are just trying to buy the new homes as well in Saint Andrews so that we can be near to our workplace. And as a planner, we have very hectic schedule every day. So we don't want the environment around our facility like that, that, that is emotional trauma. And the second thing that I want to say that it is completely, uh, bad for the environment because it's a, the emission issue. The lady already explained all the techniques, like they have, uh, like near future, they are just using the technique that is not, that is good for emissions, but but still there are so many, like, like my, uh, uh, like, uh, Vijay told me, like Vijay already discussed that so many, uh, like states in our Canada already just removing those kind of crematoriums. So I think I just want to completely just, uh, disagree with this, uh, property too, like this business come too close to our.
Thank you. Council members, any question? Thank you. Jasvir Singh? Is there anything new you wish to add?
Who is Jasvir here?
Uh, it's J.A.S.V.I.R., twenty-two Yorkville Crescent.
Uh, Jasvir Singh?
Harwinder? Uh, eleven Yorkville Crescent?
Uh, good evening, ma'am. Uh, I, uh, I agree with my old friends, so I agree with all my friends and I object the, the installation of the cremation here. So that's all. So I do not want to add anything more to, my friends already discussing everything, so they condemned the cremation here.
So you, are you employed at tornado haul?
No, I am owner of the eleven York.
Of the eleven, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, right. What do you plan to build there?
Uh, I plan to build up a building to the mechanic shop and other trucking yard. Yeah, I have eleven, three lots, three lots here with my other colleagues. So we plan a mechanic shop, truck shop and a truck yard here.
And what?
Truck, truck yard. I, I own a wide, small transport. Also, I have planned to enhance my vehicles, so.
So a mechanic, a mechanic shop?
Yeah, the trucks, the truck repair shop, to, to prepare my old trucks and, uh.
Oh, okay. Did you get that, Council Mariki?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, sir. I think of this name at all. It sort of looks like it starts with a K. Thirteen Yorkville Crescent?
Uh, he's my police, he's my partner.
Oh, okay. So he's in opposition as well?
Yeah.
Do you need these names spelled? Oh, they're the best to be done. Um, Mr. Har- Harwinder? Could you spell a name I just started?
A.K.A.
Hey, I bought yours.
Well, when the K.U.L.
A.U.L.
V.I. And D.E.R.
And the R. And last name is D.H.I.
S.I.D.A.Q.
D.H.I. Same as you, same as yours?
Yeah.
D.H.I.
The S.I.D.A.Q.
Okay. S.I.D.A.Q. Okay, got it. Thank you. Okay, did I, Maginder Gil?
Yes, that's me.
Yes, do you have anything new to add?
Sorry?
Do you have anything new to add?
I agree with whatever everyone else said. I will add to this, like I live at around three point five kilometers air distance from this property. Like I live in Saint Andrews for the last four years. And I, I agree to whatever everyone else.
Okay, thank you. Badminton T.O. Yes. Lot seventeen Yorkville Crescent? Maginder, that's your same address. Do you have someone here with you?
Oh, it's Bachata, okay. Uh, he was here. He's in opposing. He's, he's opposing.
Okay, could you spell his first name? Sorry, B.A.C.H.I.
W.T.A.R.
And the last name is?
Uh, T double O R.
Thank you. Batman Chahal?
Yeah, he's again with the same address.
Okay, and it's S.A.T.M.A.N.
N.A.
N.A. Rupin Sharma?
Yep.
You have anything new to add?
No, I don't have anything to add.
Your.
I agree with that, with all of them.
Okay, thank you. Suppe Gil, S.U.B.E.G.H. Gil?
Sorry, can you spell?
S.U.B.E.G.H.
Wait, wait, wait. He was here, he was right here.
Well, some of them couldn't hear anything from there, so I guess.
How about you? This one, I'm twenty-six Yorkville? Uh, the last name looks like starts with a V.A.N.N.I.G. First name is, it starts, could it be a G.U.O.?
G.U.R. That's me, already. Twenty-six and twenty-four Yorkville?
Got twenty-six Yorkville? You like signing your name three times? Are you?
Already signed for two of the lot.
You've signed three times?
No, just one, maybe somebody else.
Maybe it's semelius.
He owns, he, he, Mid Canada owns about five lots there, so he owns, I guess he owns three or other, he owns three, one of them.
Okay, so how do you spell this name? G.U.
R.S.E.W.A.K.
And the last name?
Sidhu.
Okay, um, is there anyone else that I've missed that has come in that has anything new to add that I haven't called on?
Maninder?
Okay.
Maninder, my name is Maninder Deepshank. I've got a couple of lots, just decided.
Just now. M.A.N. And your last name?
Singh, S.I.N.G.H.
Okay, and your specific, the address you're at?
Uh, fourteen. Fourteen and twenty.
York boat?
York boat, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes, me too. I strongly pose a development of crematorium beside my yard. As I was planning to build a warehouse and cross-talk facility just beside that yard, and it will be really bad for my business. It will lose the value for my business as well now. There gonna be, that odors and smells gonna cause a lot of rejections and stuff as I, as I transport food and clothing stuff. So, it's gonna affect that on that.
And your business is?
I run a transport company, White Ox Transport.
Councilmembers, any questions?
Good question.
Go ahead.
You're on fourteen and twenty, York boat?
Yes.
And there's, but there's nothing there, so you're planning on?
Planning to build that, yes.
And it's a trucking company you're running?
Yes, I'm bringing that company, trucking company as well, building a yard, yard for a trucking company warehouse and a cross-talk facility.
Councilmember?
Where are you located now?
In the central part.
Okay, any further questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, have I gotten everybody? Is there anybody I missed? Okay, well, your legal counsel, Peter Janikus?
Adam Merrick. Before we get in, can I ask the planners from Red River Planning to stop sharing the screen for Counselor Hunt to view unfold the presenters? Thank you. What he asked, wants to be able to see everybody.
He doesn't have to be.
Well, again, good afternoon. Good evening, sorry. You know, ju- just off the bat, I'll go into my presentation. So, one of the things we have to understand, and you in government probably understand this better.
Anyone?
That when standards are set for odors and emissions and all that, it's done by industry. It's not done by the populace. It's usually done with little input from the public. And those are industrial standards set by government and their biggest proponent being industry. Often, you know, these, these things don't match the expectations of individuals. And that's why you've probably seen a lot of the complaints that you're seeing here and why you probably see a lot of these complaints online and simple Google searches will show the same. The second thing is, I've acted for funeral companies in the past, I've acted for crematoriums, and your C O probably knows which one, or several of them in the past. And you probably draw the association if you guys need to speak to him about it. But usually, when we find, when we have clients that come to us and are looking for land to develop for a crematorium, a conditional use is not where we go. It's just not suitable. It raises this kind of objection. And it's just not in the best interest of everybody to have these kind of confrontations amongst neighbors. So, you know, on that, on that beginning, I'll draw you back to the R of the St Andrews zoning bylaw, section ten point two, page eighty-six. And industrial uses. So, heavy M two zone means a facility for processing, dismantling, assembling or manufacturing component parts or finished products that may involve stamping presses, and it highlights furnaces, reduction of volatile chemicals, or the emission of any air, water and noise pollution, and heavy truck traffic that creates a hazard and nuisance outside the facility. I'll also draw your attention to general, M one zone. Means a facility for the processing, assembling or manufacturing of component parts or finished products, but does not include any operation involving stamping presses, furnaces, or the emission of any air, water, noise pollution that creates a nuisance outside the building. Those are your bylaws. And that's what you guys of a council have agreed to. So, when we discuss conditional uses, and when we look at these business parks, we have to take a couple of things into consideration. So, first of all, you know, one of the principal opponents to this is a local business that spent in excess of five million dollars to establish a shop and will, according to their own words, bring up to a hundred and twenty-five employees through their premises. This business park was envisioned as a hub for professional, clean, collaborative, commercial growth, and that the people who have purchased lots in this would be secure in their investment. It was not their understanding that their business would be developed next to a business that is better suited in an M two heavy industrial use. The conditional use before the council date represents a significant departure from that vision, undermining not only Tornado Hallers' expectations and those of its neighbors and their investments, but also the aspirations of every business owner who's invested in this development and is now working to finalize their own plans. What you have in front of you, if you look at the map that has been presented with all the objections, is basically ninety percent of the people in this business park are objecting to this. If this was done as a condominium corporation and all the people in the condominium corporation objected, we wouldn't be here today. But we are here today because this application allows this conditional use and we're here to discuss it. So, you're gonna hear about every objection from everybody who's gonna invest millions of dollars in this municipality, who's gonna bring hundreds of people into this business park, many of whom are going to buy and build homes, buy lots, build homes, and settle the neighborhood and enrich the tax base of East St Paul. There is nothing wrong with the crematorium. It's only its location. I'm sure its owner is a good person, has good objectives and wants to be a good citizen. But this use, their use does not meet the expectation of everybody around them. And you can see, everybody here has been respectful, everybody's been kind, and everybody's participating well. But again, it does not fit into the objectives of people who are gonna be spending millions of dollars in your community. And you've already had a number of them said that they're gonna retract and they're gonna look for other places to do business because they don't feel, for whatever reason, that it's gonna be a good investment and being next to crematorium is gonna be good for their business and eventually their resale value. These are all small businesses and they're speaking their minds. So, with that in mind, let's talk about more about the, about the plan. Now, first of all, it's a misalignment with business park vision and zoning. Our clients, including the other property owners with broad audit this development, all express the purchase into business park, not an industrial park. There are differences in the two uses governed, as I explained to you earlier. And they're covered by different sections of your local zoning bylaw. And again, I stress, this is your zoning bylaw. So, eight, it's incompatible, incompatibility with business park designation. The proposed crematorium does not fit within the intended character of a business park. An M one zoning, which is typically designed for commercial services, office use and light business activities. You've already heard that there's people here that are cross-docking food. They're cross-docking, cross-docking clothing items. And they're worried about the end product that they're gonna be transferring, attracting any odor. Even if the proponent doesn't sound small danger to that. In contrast, a crematorium is inherently industrial, involving high temperature incineration, emissions and the handling of human remains, all incompatible with the business park's clean, professional image. Is inconsistent with the M one general industrial zoning. The M one zone is intended for low-impact facilities focused on assembling or manufacturing components without stamping presses, furnace or emissions that would affect surrounding properties. Now, there was some poor defense trying to be given to compare the emissions of diesel trucks versus the emissions of, of the proponent's business. Diesel trucks is not on hearing here. This is only about crematoriums. And anything about any other activity is moot. It's not even something that should even be entertained. Restricted use of furnaces. The M one explicitly restricts furnaces operations to avoid intensive heat generating processes, which are essential for cremation. Prohibition, prohibited emissions and nuisances. M one zones aims to avoid operations with emissions or other nuisances outside the building. A crematorium, which emit gases, particulates and odors, fails outside these parameters. And let me put it this way. I've heard these applications before on behalf of crematoriums. And everyone I heard comes with the first statement, this is the latest and greatest technology. As soon as it's approved and there's a problem, and there's a problem with odor, it's outside of your hands. You do not have the ability to object. You do not have the ability to come back to the owner and say you're emitting, because then becomes a provincial issue. And again, it's based on standards that are an industrial level. It's not based on the standard that you would expect working in your office. And it's not appropriate under the secondary plan. I had a planner review this, and the St Andrews Airport Secondary Plan identifies the subject line as being light industrial, which further enforces that heavy industrial use is not appropriate. Location, I'm looking at three point three point one point three policies, location. Designated commercial industrial lands are identified on map one. Commercial uses shall be located where the traveling public has clear visibility from adjacent highways. Light industrial uses shall be directed to the interior sites of a business park. This contravenes exactly what your, your bylaw say. This is, this is a, an industrial activity in the interior of the business park, not in the outside, as your own policy states. Finally, there's more appropriate for M two heavy industrial zoning. Crematoriums align better with M two zoning, which accommodates facilities involved in furnaces, emissions and potential nuances, nuisances, sorry, outside the facility. Introducing a crematorium into the M one zone would violate zoning standards and disrupt the intended lower, lower impact environment. Now, that's, that's under your zoning. The next point I want to make is a negative impact on the business park occupants and, and future viability. Critical consideration is the impact of permitting a crematorium on the overall business environment, future viability of this development. The property owners who have purchased lots within this area did so in the understanding that would be a business park now that have industrial zone. These purchasers have invested with the expectation of a lower-impact business environment, a business environment consisting of general and M one zones. Aligned a crematorium which more closely aligns with every zone fundamentally operates, but alters the nature of the development risk to deter current and prospective businesses from moving forward with the plans, notably the potential deterrence of current and prospective occupants. And in addition, there's an expectation that, given the millions of dollars that's gonna be invested and the investment that's already been made, the council, the council has responsibility to protect existing investments. Property owners acquire their lots based on a clear vision of the business park. This crematorium lot acquired via auction rather than a developer sale was not part of this intended development plan. Allowing compatible use now undermines the integrity of council's original commitment to property owners and risks altering the area's character. Retention of business and economic developments is another point. Council must consider the likelihood that introducing a crematorium may promote, may prompt businesses to relocate. Losing business could hinder the area's economic growth, tax base and appeal to prospective. And this jeopardizes the business park's future viability. Health, safety and morale concerning for business park employees. This is another heading. Crematoriums are notorious health risks. A sample Google search was, Google search will show this. More importantly, the Google reviews of existing provincial crematoriums show evidence of people complaining as to the odors emitted by crematorium, crematorium operators. There's a perceived, business parks are perceived as safe, low-risk environments. Introducing crematorium, which emits mercury and particulate matter, could pose long-term health risks for employees and nearby facilities a concern that has been acknowledged by the proponent. I'm not a health professional, not a health expert, but neither is the proponent. We can only read what we see. We can only see real examples of what's happened in other instances. And there's nobody here giving these, you know, real-world empirical data that we would want that's based, that's based by an expert. Impact on workplace morale. Employees have already expressed discomfort working near a facility handling human remains and operating incineration process. That, that's just life. People do not feel comfortable working next to these kind of facilities. And there's nothing that's gonna change their perception. There's nothing the proponent has done that will, that will change their perception. Finally, you also have clientele perception. For many businesses within the park, client perception is critical. The presence, the presence of a crematorium with association, with associated stigma, sorry, could deter clients from visiting, associating with businesses in the area, impacting business operations and resulting in financial loss. Finally, there is the availability of more suitable locations at St Andrews Airport. Our, my clients, and I think the general public in this area argues that there are more suitable areas for this type of business. The, a more appropriate location exists in the St Andrews Airport, close to where Croco Funerals Chapel exists. This site, isolated from business activity, would mitigate concerns about emission, health risk, psychological impacts on both residential communities and business park stakeholders. Placing a crematorium at an isolated site would protect the business park environment, allowing the park to maintain its appeal to current and future businesses. And it would align with your, your current, your current zoning principles that typically separate heavy industry uses from commercial and residential areas, preserving the business park's intended character. So, I look forward to any questions that you guys may have.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember, do you have any question?
So, you're suggesting that, that this crematorium goes into the airport zone? The A I P?
I, I think it has to go into somewhere which is not a business park. A business park, if you, you know, if you think about it, it's marketed as a place for light businesses, for offices. It's not, it's, it has never been marketed as a place where you do have any industry.
Have you been through the airport at any point in time in the last?
I, I driven past it and.
So, there is a crematorium there from Croco.
Yeah.
There is also Chirp Enterprises, which is a very large trucking company. There's another Gen X trucking company. There are significant businesses around that crematorium already. So, to suggest that it goes over to already where there's other businesses that are established? Is that what you're trying to say?
Well, what I'm trying to say is where, where it's more suitable to, you know, in, in the area. There are, there's lots of industrial zones, and I'm just giving you one example. And the reason I'm giving to you is because Croco is already established and the people in the area are accepting of that. In this area, you got millions of dollars in investment and people are gonna start pulling. and people are going to start pulling out, and they've told you so. You've got a substantial investment on the other side of the road that, on the second floor, will view the smokestack of this business. And they're saying, "No, we don't want this to be." That's not the vision that they were sold. That was not the intended purpose of the business park, and it was not their understanding. These are people that are bringing people in the area. They're going to build homes in the area, going to live in the area, and increase your tax base. This kills it.
Without speculation?
Well, I didn't know. You just had, you had three or four people that are already saying that they're pulling out. It's not speculation, and it's not speculation. And you have one established right across the street.
I'm just gonna jump on Deputy Mayor Dornbach's. If everyone that spoke, they didn't get the impression that a lot of them are actual residents of St. Andrews, yes, your own business property, but you don't live in St. Andrews, one of you I heard maybe...
Eleven to no.
That would you, yeah.
That really is not the test for conditional use. The test for conditional use is...
What you're trying to say, okay, what you're trying to say is all that money...
I've never seen a conditional use. I've been doing this for a long time. I've never seen a conditional use that where if you go into conditional use, you go and get the approval of your neighbors. If you're at first instance and coming into is to fight with everybody, you guys are going to have to deal with it later on. And you guys are going to have to deal with the impact.
I wasn't finished. Yes, everyone has great ideas, and that's wonderful on behalf of St. Andrews to hear. But we do have one person who's actually got all the paperwork in line and is ready to go.
And you also...
And that is the flip side.
...who has spent $5 million, it's across the street, and is telling you it's going to impact their business one way or the other. They're going to have employees that don't, you've just heard their employees that don't want to work.
Mr. Exel, something we've heard all the concerns raised.
But you can't be blind to it. You can't pretend that they didn't say them.
No, we've heard them all. Council still has to deliberate this. Counselor Slicker, do you have any other further questions?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Any other counsel? No, you've all spoken, well, it's okay. Now, if we...
I just want to mention to this. If this crematorium comes up, we're going to be out of there.
Well, now, to me, I might be, you're threatening.
No, I'm not trying to threaten. I'm just mentioning that we're going to be...
It's not, listen, it's not a threat. What they're saying to you is that they have, they have employees. Sorry. What they're, it's not a threat. What they're saying to you is they have employees that are all collectively, 125, and said that they don't feel comfortable working there. We are in an environment where it's very hard to have employee retention. What you're telling them is that you're not concerned with their, with their welfare. No, it's not just when you say that, sorry. When you say that, you're telling them that you're not concerned about their legitimate business interests in retaining employees, who have all said that they're not going to, not going to be, they're not comfortable working in that environment.
But they're... And the employees are out with their trucks across Canada and the United States.
But you have office employees, you have people coming in, you have people that work in the cost decking. It's not just the trucking people. There's people...
No one will threaten anybody spending $10,000.
Sorry, this gentleman, order, this gentleman is beginning.
I've been very sincere. These people are not, it's about livelihood. And if you cannot attract people to come and work, if you cannot attract tenants to come and occupy, what use is it? Crematoriums are blemish in these kind of, and you know, again, it's nothing to do with the operator. It's nothing to do with the equipment they use. It is, they carry a stigma. And unfortunately, this stigma is not appropriate in this business park. It's not what was sold to these people who came in and invested their hard-earned money to make and grow their businesses. This is, this is a backtrack on what it was. Your own bylaws, and I'm looking and reading you your own bylaws. They do not permit furnaces in an M, in a light industrial zone, sorry, I forgot, in an M1 zone. M2 is permitted in an industrial. It should be obvious. Anybody who ever comes in here and invests money to buy a lot here should understand that they will face, you know, the ire of their neighbors by coming to make this investment. Usually, you know, when people come to us and they say, "You know, I want to put in a conditional use," the first thing they say, "Why? Are you nuts?"
Well, we're not debating that now. We have a conditional use before council right now. Don't have anything else before us. We're dealing with a conditional use.
Absolutely.
That's the way it was fought.
And listen, and I appreciate it, but usually what you do in a conditional use, you go and seek the approval of your neighbors. And these are all, these are all the proponents' neighbors, and they're all saying, "No."
Okay, thank you. Do you have anything, anything else to add? Counselor members, do you have any question? No. Our Counselor Marakne?
No.
Now, I'll hear, can you hold on for two? Ms. Newman, procedure is, as I read out at the beginning, do you have anything in response to some of the concerns raised?
I do, and I want to be respectful of everyone's time as well, so I won't drop the knuckles there. I think it's hard to pull against. I just come here like, no.
Come speak to me, you might...
I'm okay. Where is it a permitted use in St. Andrews? You said you shouldn't do this for a conditional use. Where is it permitted in St. Andrews?
I'm not here to find industrial use for the proponent. That's their job.
Explain it, actually.
Well, it's not a permitted use in any of the zoning areas. And if you're objecting to them allowing, you know, having a conditional use in M1 and M2, that sounds like you need to get in and help them re-rank their regulations for their zoning.
That's, that's...
Okay, we're not getting into it. We're getting to us. Ms. Newman, could you address some of the, and I know you're addressing some of the...
For sure.
But not into debate, just, I believe counsel will probably have some questions as well.
You know, St. Andrews, the city of Silver, they built their beautiful new, brand-new health center, 500 meters away from an existing crematorium, from Voyage Crematorium. I went out and measured it using satellite images. If there was a legitimate health concern, why would they invest millions of dollars into building a hospital so close to a crematorium? And also, like, I can see I'm vastly on them here today in terms of business owners. And I'm not afraid to see, to say it. I think there is a large cultural component of this, where there's an uneasiness with death. I've heard it over and over today that there's going to be uneasy feelings in the employees, psychological unease. Someone mentioned that the employees are going to come in with a prepared mindset, and they're going to have emotional trauma from coming there. To me, you know, at what point do we weigh that? And if people are going to pull out because of that, because you have a majority of landowners in this development that are culturally not as comfortable with death and cremation as we are, whereas I am, then if they pull out, then isn't that why we have a free market? Are those lots going to sit empty? No. Or are other businesses going to buy them and move in that are okay with being named?
Do you have any other things to address some of the points that were raised?
Not really, because it was the same point being brought up over and over again about emissions and about psychological unease, to be honest.
Okay, Counselor Slicker, any question?
Ms. Newman, sign it down in the building.
I don't intend to have any signage.
Correct, and that's like...
No, no. Because I don't intend, my families don't come to the crematorium. When Mr. Gill called me a couple weeks ago to inquire about my intention of creating a crematorium, one of his concerns was, well, parking. That was his primary concern. Where are the people going to park? It wasn't about environmental, it wasn't about emotional stuff, it was about parking. And I said, well, I asked him, "Are you sick?" He said, "Yes." And I said, "I understand in your culture, when you have a cremation, lots of people attend that, and they witness it. It's the common thing to do." And I think everyone would agree, like, when there's a cremation, lots of people attend it. The families in the demographic that I serve, they don't want to be there for the cremation. Maybe one family out of 100 wants to be there. And it's not a bunch of people, it's one or two people.
True.
It's my understanding that, maybe I don't understand, that the body that, if the body is brought to you, it's brought to you by a funeral home, is it not?
We are a licensed funeral home.
Okay.
Yeah, so we are a licensed funeral home, and there's, you know, there's two sort of transfer services that are available to us, but we can also do transfers. And we intend to have our building is designed so that the vehicle will fully drive in, and the door will shut behind it, and so that no one will see any deceased. And that also is important for us, for the dignity of the deceased that we care for. Okay, thank you.
I just have one more question, and I don't know whether it was answered. It probably was, but how many cremations are you doing per week, per day?
We currently serve about 450 families a year right now.
450?
450 families.
A year, okay.
A year. And so generally, it's not going to make sense for us to run a crematorium seven days a week, right, when doing one or two cremations. We might do two cremations one day and none the next, or three cremations at a maximum.
Counselor Marakne?
Ms. Newman, new crematoriums cause air pollution.
Yes. Breathing causes air pollution.
Yes.
So you would agree that they do produce carbon monoxide?
I'm producing carbon monoxide right now.
Nitrous oxide, sulfuric dioxide, mercury, and vines foot.
Mercury is actually not measured anymore in terms of cremation emissions, so that might, you know, be a statistic, because the use of mercury in fillings has declined. And generally, as people have, from roughly, that was going to replace. So that's not even a metric that's measured anymore. So I couldn't say that, yes, they're being measured.
Okay, so if you get an older people, an older person...
By the time someone is that old, they generally don't have their own teeth anymore, and their fillings have been replaced if they were for free at one point.
Do you agree that there is 46 different types of pollutants coming off of a cremation?
I can believe it, just like there are with every other industrial use that would go into that park.
Okay, I guess that's my point.
Forty-six, though. It's an industrial park, it's an M1 industrial.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You mentioned earlier that if the operator wasn't trained properly, there is risk potential of odor, smell, visible smoke. How do you ensure that that wouldn't happen, seeing as how there's food trucks that are, or trailers that are...
And that's a valid concern, and that's why we're using, I think we're going to be the first funeral home or the first crematorium in Manitoba that's going to be using this empire system. So it's Matthews Environmental, which has installed crematoriums across Canada. Most crematorium units in Manitoba are Matthews cremation units, except for the one, the Pyrex one that was in Gilbert City engulfed in flames. That was the only Pyrex one that was in a Matthews unit. So Matthews Environmental has come up with this system that is so fine-tuned that it eliminates the need for a skilled operator as much. I'm still going to have a skilled operator, but it's not the traditional operation of a crematorium where you have to individually set the temperatures for the two burners. You have to time them separately. There's a lot of delicate balancing, and this does it automatically, which eliminates that human error.
Any further questions by council members?
I have one comment.
Go ahead, Counselor.
I was on council in 2003, 2002, when an application was made for the airport. Similar concerns were raised at the time during several meetings of the planning board and council and residents. So it's been operating there for 21, 22 years, and was on the airport board for over 20 years. Never heard any concerns, complaints from any business operators there or anybody in the area. So that's just a comment I have that I've been around since then. And that was, the same comments were made 22 years ago at the time of the application for the one that's at the airport now, so, thanks.
Okay, thank you. I just have one question. So just clarification, and I think you meant, how much smoke comes when you have a body there?
There should be no smoke emitting from, they call it the stack, basically the chimney. There should be no smoke. The only thing that should be visible would be a heat ripple, kind of like when you have a hot barbecue open during the summer, you'll see a heat ripple. There should be no smoke. In less than 1% of the times, there's going to be some smoke, generally. So that's, their statistic right now is less than 1%. They'll call it a smoke event. That means there's visible smoke for 30 seconds or more.
Counselor members, do you have any other question? Okay, thank you. I've been asked if we could take a five-minute, because we're going to, this... I've been asked by two members of council to have a five-minute break. Okay? We'll be breaking for five to 10 minutes. We'll be breaking for five to ten minutes.
Recording stopped.
A brief introduction to the colony and who they are. Introduction to Burns Mandell and what we do. Why the new development, the need, the need for the proposed conditional use. What's being proposed? We're going to review the Planning Act test for conditional use applications that that should be considered for council to make a decision. What will be next upon receipt of conditional use? And then when you said I'd be happy to answer any questions. All right, Rock Lake Colony is. Who is proposing with a new colony in Norwood Colony? Rock Lake Colony currently exists near Gross Isle. They were founded in nineteen forty-seven as a daughter colony. From Ironville Colony, which is southeast of Eli. For those unfamiliar with with hydrate colonies, there's a, they are a community, as you can see here. Place for kids to grow up, place for adults to raise families. Everybody to have work, be employed. They are a community that consists of housing, churches, schools, community buildings, dining hall, recreation facilities. So they're a lot like the community around this evening. So we'll go through our rink and when I was a kid, we were on the ice in November. Didn't see any in the outdoor rink here today. So that is how they live. So today here, we've got some names that'll be a little easier. The councillor will be happy to hear that most are roses and hoifers, so we can pronounce those a little bit simpler. Ivan Hofer is the manager of Rock Lake Colony. Ivan's in the back. Solomon Throat, minister. In that kind of as well, Jonathan Hofer, second minister. Glenn Gross, which some of you know, is the farm boss that works in the area. Ike Hofer, farm manager. And Andy, is Andy here as well?
Andy, the livestock manager.
So I just wanted to introduce you to some of, hopefully your new neighbors on development to take place. It's just a drone photo of the current colony, just to give you an idea, if you've never been to a colony, what it might look like. Typically, they're built around the central church and dining halls, so that's kind of in the middle of this one, you can see. Surrounded by the residents. Down in the bottom left corner is a school. Top left corner is their manufacturing and kind of top right would be their livestock production area. Rock Lake Colony, which we won't get too much into them, but they are into manufacturing. Talk a little bit about that tonight and some of the stuff that they do. They are into cold, cold form steel, so they do a lot of laser cutting. So they work with products tube steel. And they, they build and form a lot of different products, laser cutting fabrication for different industries around Manitoba. That's a little bit about Rock Lake and where they're at as to Burns Mandell. We've been working with Rock Lake since twenty twenty-three, providing engineering and technical support for the new colony. A lot of planning goes into the colony in the approvals, as well as the design, obviously. We, we do that work. Above is a bit of a list of some of the things that we quite often get involved in when it comes to colony planning. Excuse me. In hiring, you know, a professional, a professional engineering firm. I like to, you know, to think that the colony has demonstrated a desire to make informed, conscientious decisions about their new site and ensure that they're complying with the laws, regulations, guidelines and best practices for the development of a colony. The reason we're here today was to discuss the colony of Norwood. Rock Lake is proposing in southeast nineteen sixteen four east, just off the intersection of eight and seventeen. You can see it located with the red X kind of on the drawing to your left. And the Google image to the right, and it shows sort of the lots. The planning report, which they had done earlier today. Just like we don't expect a family afford to stay in a bachelor suite forever. As families grow, more space and opportunities are required. Traditionally, colonies will house up to a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five persons before additional developments are required. The colony is proposed to develop a daughter colony to house the families, meet the needs, and through schooling, dining, church, recreational facilities to sustain this growth. Proposed development is located between the communities Two One and Natalie. This site was selected for a lot of reasons, when we did an initial review of the site. Some of which were zoning designation, access to PTH eight as well as seventeen. Transportation links are key. The nature of the surrounding area. Colony currently owns approximately, approximately six thousand acres kind of in the surrounding area. So it's, you know, there are already a large land holder in the area, so it made sense for them. And they also have developed a green storage yard in the. Pointer comes up here, but kind of in the northwest of nineteen sixteen four east. So they already have a number of bins and green storage in that area. When we first started looking, met with, with Rock Lake and talked about sites. One of the first things that we do from a planning perspective is look, look at setbacks and to figure out suitability of a parcel of land. So this is just a sketch from a report that we had done. You can see kind of the houses, neighboring houses with circles diameters around them. That's minimum setback requirements. The smaller one is a three hundred and fifty meter setback requirement that would be required for all barns and newer storage facilities. The larger ones is a seven hundred meter setback that would be a requirement for outdoor facilities, maneuver storage facilities, confined livestock areas. So quite often colonies are into the export sector and livestock. So that a lot of times will dictate a land that's kind of off the table to be able to develop it. So this little table, kind of the yellow, was defined as being land that was currently owned, that would be suitable to be able to develop a potential colony site. We did a detailed regulatory review that looked at all provincial legislation requirements, red river planning requirements. Give a simple development plan, zoning bylaws to determine suitability and prepare a report for the client. And then with that, the site was selected and we moved into site planning. So this is a proposed site plan that was included as part of the planning district's report. I have a bit of a couple of things to point out, maybe. Proposed lagoon, which won't show up on the next drawing, is in the southwest twenty sixteen four. So east on the easterly corridor section, over from the proposed colony site. A lagoon is a provincially licensed facility, wastewater treatment facility. So it wouldn't, you know, doesn't fall as part of this conditional. We'll have to go through the environment act, environmental act process in order to obtain a license for that. But just for clarity, I wanted to include it on this drawing. So that's it kind of off to the east. If I zoom in on site plan itself, a little bit closer. As mentioned, you know, there's, there's a lot of different things within a colony site. I'll start maybe in the top left corner. Typically, colony will have their own concrete batch plant for especially initial stages of construction. They're going to use a lot of concrete, so they quite often will batch their own concrete. East of there, we have proposed kind of a plumbing, electrical and carpentry shop, machine shop, truck shop. So usually a large facility that would house the trades within the colony. They typically have licensed electricians, plumbers, carpenters. So they'll have their shops there, machine shop, obviously for repair of farm equipment, truck shop. South of there, we've proposed the manufacturing. When a colony is looking to split and start a daughter colony, they quite often don't know what is the manufacturing. We know that they're going to manufacture something, but what is the industry is unknown. So we've identified an area where that would be. After that industry ends up being something that requires special licensing, obviously that would be part of the process would be to obtain the licensing required for it. Most times in colonies would be similar to what Rock Lake manufactures in machining, welding, that type of stuff. So adjacent to that, they've got a farm, equipment park and storage area, and then a centralized area. As I mentioned earlier, kitchen, dining and church typically forms kind of the nucleus or the center, the heartbeat of the colony, surrounded by residents. In this case, we're showing forty-three housing units total. One thing I want to mention is that this is in concept and it does change. They'll be, they, they're welcoming to us and they're, and they're going to say, and they're going to come to you guys and say, well, we had on that drawing duplex units. We're proposing to build a three, threeplex instead of a twoplex. So one of, in one of the conditions, I guess, I hope that we can talk about it being in concept, not in exact, because it's impossible to predict twenty-five years down the road exactly what this is going to look like when it's built out. But we know that these components will exist, but for it to be exact. I, from my experience, I've done enough, only they never will, so there's going to be changes to the layout. So these are duplexes, they might be threeplexes. We're continuing on typically, there's a greenhouse, lots of gardening, most of the produce is grown locally and consumed by the members of the colony. At the north, sort of above this site, we propose the school and gym, they have modern school and gyms, playground. And then in the southeast corner, we've proposed their poultry operation, being a broiler bar and a lair bar. That, as mentioned, would be an additional conditional use. We recognize that, but in order to move the project forward, there's a sense of urgency to start getting into final detailed design and begin somewhat recognizing that any livestock would require an additional conditional use. On the site, kind of the dotted blue up in the north, sort of the top right corner, that would be a stormwater retention pond to address the provincial drainage requirements. It's one of the requirements of a site like this is that we need to get a provincial drainage license, which requires us to do a pre-five, post-one-hundred analysis and be able to hold that water discharge into municipal infrastructure. That pond functions for two things, one to be able to achieve that, also as borrow picks for materials so that we can raise the elevation of the site as required in order to achieve our grading and drainage design. So that's a little bit about, about the site, you know, I could go on for a long time about why we did and what we did, but the other day, we're here for conditional use application, asking for permission to be able to construct a, you know, colony site at that location. Typically, the planning app test is three questions. Is it compatible? Was it not detrimental? Is it generally consistent with the neighboring? So that's the decision our council must use to, to make the decision and approve it. That's in accordance with section one one six of the Planning Act. So with the Planning Act test, it will be compatible with the general nature of the surrounding area. As you can see, the area is primarily agricultural based. The term general nature of surrounding area is not defined in the Planning Act or other mandatory regulations. However, the region is zoned as A eighty and designated AR. The site has already been evaluated by policymakers with due consideration for the character and nature of the land surrounding area. Giving this zoning, the ability to adhere to and exceed the necessary setbacks from other developments and land uses and the nature of the proposed operation, establishment dwelling, units, farm buildings, light manufacturing facilities are all with the general nature. Colony developments are common to rule, earlier Manitoba, into the inner lake. This type of mixed use residential industrial development is suited for A G eighty lands, given the large parcel size, adjacent land uses and also being agricultural resource based. The second question, it will not be detrimental to the health or gender welfare of people living or working in the surrounding area or negatively affect other properties or potential development in the surrounding area. Adjacent parcels to the north and east are owned up here by the applicant. So on this map, the purple is lands that are owned currently by the colony. The orange is sort of the area where we proposed the development will occur. So you can see a large, a large portion of adjacent lands are apparently owned by the colony. So because of that, I know it's our opinion that any impacts that may be considered detrimental can be sustainably mitigated through the use of good design and compliant operations. The third question is it generally consistent with applicable provisions of the development plan, bylaws and zoning? The development plan sets along, sets out the long range goals and objectives for the district, which helps to guide development in environmentally and economically sustainable manner. Based on the land used designation as a resource agriculture, the proposed development with agriculture and resource related uses is consistent with the goals and objectives of the development. Requirements for transportation, ground art protection, municipal site servicing, flood mitigation, mineral resources, heritage resources, rare species have held in compiled and or exceeded in the design and development. Thus, the development is consistent with applicable provisions for every applying district development plan. Your zoning bylaw defines the prescribed development standards for buildings and structures within the municipality. The site and majority of the region is zoned as A eighty agricultural. All buildings and features will conform to the requirements of this and the required setbacks. So we believe having passed, you know, the legal test of the Planning Act, we would ask that the RM of St Andrews approve the conditional use application for establishment of a colony farm at the southeast nineteen sixteen four east. Pond receipts have a conditional use, there obviously the work's not done. Many, as I touched on, many aspects require further licensing approvals. The lagoon requires environmental act license. The site, detailed site requires a drainage plan, provincial drainage plan. The utilities require public water system, requires office drinking water approvals. All of your buildings require building and plumbing permits for refining. So we, we recognize that, you know, those are all the steps that will be followed moving forward through into the final detailed design. I noted that your fire department had requested condition. That's calling, we deal with fire, local fire departments on all projects. It's difficult to say exactly what the ultimate design ends up being, because it depends a lot on what the industry is. So we recognize that and we will work with your fire chief inspector to ensure that the design is in accordance with NFPA, which is National Fire Protection Association. That's pretty standard practice, that would require storage of water for firefighting and access to all the buildings to be able to get emergency equipment in and around for firefighting. I'll note that colonies typically, they own their own fire equipment. And my experience in rural Manitoba, they're usually the first one out of fires to send out their trained firefighters to get out and help their neighbors when the, when the time comes. They have the equipment, they have the training, they have the experience and, you know, they'll be the first one there. So they're definitely going to be available to work with your local fire people. That wasn't too long. We believe that the proposed colony development will be beneficial to the region with an increase in tax base, but moreover, an increase in good neighbors. Colonies have a reputation to be first on the scene in times of crisis. Whether there's sandbagging and flood situations, responding to their own firefighting emergencies, being, you know, and being available for community needs, big and small. We ask that you consider the conditional use in front of you this evening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. One thing I maybe would like just to touch on was the, what conditions that you had recommended. Can you pull that slide up again, please?
I think we might have to stop sharing your screen. And there's the conditions there.
The one that I noted was number one, as limited to what has been presented in this application. I would request that there be some consideration into the wording of how that condition may be to provide some flexibility. They will add concept or a number of residential units, because I can draw you right now a shop that's a hundred by five hundred, and I know in five years when we go to design it, they're going to say, somebody else just built one that's a hundred by seven hundred, we gotta go a hundred by seven fifty. That's just kind of how it often goes, so that some of that's difficult to predict right now. But that condition could be maybe worded so that it provided a little bit of flexibility that they don't have to pack every time. That would be greatly appreciated. Obviously, the rest of them, all permits, we understand and there's no issues with that. We are very happy to provide you with environmental act licenses for the lagoon, drainage licenses as, as those are obtained. Roads within the colony are always wide. They're, they're going to be wider to be able to handle the truck traffic primarily with sort of four point four, two point, four point two meters. And dealing with your fire chief, that would be part of our process for the design when we get into that, in the detailed design. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Council members, you have any questions, Mr. Burns?
For the manufacturing part of that down the road, would that all be contained within the manufacturing building? Would there be anything manufactured outside and like noise wise, anything?
I'd like to say it'll all be in the building for sure, but it, you know, it depends a little bit on what, you know, what they may get into manufacturing.
Yeah, I assume with the setbacks from the residents, it should be.
Should be fine, yeah, there's, and we would propose the shelter belts and buffers as much as possible to contain, you know, the colony and setback up off of frame of road. So I, I wouldn't anticipate that being a problem. The only reason I'm reluctant to answer that is I know that some colonies get into precast concrete manufacturing and they have their table sitting outside where they're making precast pads, so. Typically, it would all be inside, but it depends on what the, what they may decide to get into.
And then is there any traffic concerns for highway eight, nine or seventeen?
That I anticipate will come up with MTI will request a traffic effects. I don't really have any, like eight, we know is busy. And that's why we want to get the bulk of the, the truck traffic up to seventeen where that MI, we, we did contact MI and had some discussions there, there is plans for the intersection at eight seventeen at some point. So farm equipment and truck traffic would be ideally directed to that location as much as possible. But, you know, I, I live in Brandon, but I drove the area not to know how busy eight can be on a bright year on a weekend, so, you know, definitely traffic there. There is some concerns.
I was just going to ask the planner if there was another way we could reword that first condition.
It also depends on the comfort level of council. So we could add some variables noting that flexibility would be required. We could potentially say that the conditional use is limited to what has been presented in the application, noting further refinements will be required at the time of permitting. Significant variances to the concept plan would require a new conditional approval, something along those lines. Or, or it's fixed as the applicant has mentioned, based on the dimensions and the configuration that they've shown.
I don't think it should be, because like you said, you know, we changed all the time.
Right, so.
My worry with that is we'll be vaccine every three times a year saying, oh, that shop's going over fifty feet, sorry.
Understood. So like I suggested, we could say the conditional use is being limited to what is presented, noting further refinements will be required at the time of permitting. Significant variances to the concept would require a new conditional approval. So that's a little subjective, if the shop is going, you know, if it's suddenly ten thousand square feet larger, maybe that's a significant variance as opposed to, you know, it's, it's ten feet larger on this one side.
I don't know, heights would word that, but would that be satisfactory, like? I guess the purpose is, yeah, that you're not applying here before us every month. For a new conditional use for a number of feet. I don't know how that could be defined.
So we, we couldn't have it exactly prescriptive. It would have to allow some flexibility subject to interpretation, right? So there'd have to be some discretion of the development officer to decide, okay, this is beyond the scope of what was originally proposed. So we have to build some discretion. So what I'm suggesting is that the conditional use be limited to what is presented, noting further refinements will be required at the time of permitting. Significant variances would require a new conditional use approval, subject to the discretion of the development officer.
I think that brings it back to.
I don't mind, I don't mind that, because I think then if it's, you know, we come to you and say, well, we're moving that slightly, then your development officer can say, well, yeah, but that still means the intent.
Exactly.
If not, but if I come and say we're, we want to put in three, three more manufacturing buildings, then you could say, well, hey, that's, that's a little beyond what we originally taught. So that gives you a little bit of flexibility, we're not quite as prescribed that way.
Hey, Councilmember, can you add a question?
Yes, I did, just one question, that's to do with flooding. Do you acknowledge has our property ever flooded? It's not too far away from like ten miles from the lake.
Yeah, we looked, you have that, we looked at the ninety-seven flood elevations and I think we were.
It should be in the lettering. If not, we can blow up the regular.
We were probably fifteen meters above that, it's, it's quite a bit above flood elevations. That will also be dealt with and part of our drainage design and health of the province. We will, we'll look at that in.
Yeah, I was concerned that it would be in a flood.
All of these building plants, it just sort of goes to.
Yeah, no, it's not.
However, if they require a lot of grain as part of the building, it comes to us, and at that point, we have all.
As we bring our planners, were you going to speak to this application? Had, did you have comments for this application?
No, I have nothing to add.
I guess one final piece of that, that I skipped over in my presentation, sorry. We did also host, host an open house in the spring where we had everybody out, everybody was invited. I think we had approximately thirty neighbors. Previous presentation talked about you want to get your neighbors on board, you know, we're trying, we met with everybody, we, we were transparent, we showed them what we want to do, what the proposed plan is. There's, there was some objection, obviously, and some opposition, but I think that's important because the other day, they're going to be neighbors, hopefully they're going to be neighbors, so we wanted to head that off right at the, right at the pass and make sure that everybody understood what the plans were. And there wasn't a whole bunch of coffee talk rumors. And, you know, so we did host that, and somewhere you were at the open house, and I think it was a good turnout of thirty plus people. And I mean, it was, was very beneficial, we got some good feedback, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, okay, Yvonne Gator. You have both, you're in opposition and you're here for information, would you like to speak to the matter? I'm afraid, are these people on, are they already listening?
The two that were typed out, pre-registered in advance, were both being in opposition and information. I can't confirm if they're here today or not.
Are they online?
No.
Okay, they're not here. Strinky Patton Penner, would you like to speak to the application?
No, I only had one comment, because that was just the leading.
Could you come forward? Could you come forward because we're here, um, it's all being recorded, so I'll speak into the microphone, please.
Um, yes, I was at the meeting in the spring and we had raised concerns about the, the traffic on Kramer Road and Penner Road. And they said that they would look into it. Well, this fall, the traffic down there was extremely fast, uh, and very careless in the driving ability. And that, that coming down Penner Road and Kramer Road as well. And they said that they would address it in the spring and so far they haven't. That was my only concern so far.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Birds, could you speak to that? Are you aware of this?
No, uh, not aware of it. We can discuss further with, with the colony. Yeah, as to what that might be.
Okay.
Sorry.
What would be the traffic at this point in time? Like that she's referring to.
Green trucks.
Grain trucks, okay, but not to do with the proposal today?
No, but.
Just, just in general?
The rock, like trucks that were farming in the area were using those roads.
I see.
Okay. So you'll discuss that with your.
Yeah, that's, well, that's a, you know, it's a, a difficult one that they are farmers, they farm six thousand acres, so they are going to use, utilize those, the roads, um, whether it's, it's, if it's speed or careless driving, then.
That's what I'm concerned about is being careless.
Then the manage, management would have to deal with their younger people that are running the equipment and, and having those decisions for sure.
Thank you. Okay, so that's all we have for that matter. Next item is variation order number seventy-eight, two oh two four, eight ninety-three Hall Road West. Um, Brayden, you'll put councillor Hunt in the waiting room. He's removing himself from this.
No, and, uh, is that, yeah, Hall Road. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Planner, could you please proceed, please? Seventy-eight dash twenty-four.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Goodness, uh, property is located at eight ninety-three Hall Road and the applicant is seeking council's approval to vary the minimum site area in an agricultural, uh, limited zone. This is in relation to an approved subdivision. So the site area requirement as per the zoning bylaw is forty acres and the applicant is proposing two point eight one acres. Here is, uh, the location of the property. And here is the subdivision application maps showing the, um, the yard site that's being subdivided out. Should council wish to approve this application, the variance should be limited to what has been presented and any further changes will require a new variance approval. And that the applicant owner obtain all permits from the Red River Planning District. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, council members, do you have any questions? This is basically a egg splitter. Okay. Well, good. Okay, thank you. Next item, variation order ninety-six, two oh two four, five ninety-three Gimli, Gimli Road.
Sorry, Madam Chair, there was no one to speak on that one? No, okay, thank you, sorry. Uh, five ninety-three Gimli Road. Uh, the applicant is seeking to reduce the required front yard for an end interior side yard in an agricultural general zone, and this is to allow the construction of an accessory building that is thirty-two by twenty-four. So the front yard setback requirement in the zone is fifty feet and the applicant is proposing ten. The side yard requirement is fifteen feet and the applicant is proposing five. Here's a site, uh, an aerial photo of the property. It is quite heavily tree. And here's a site plan, um, prepared by the applicant, showing the, the ten feet off of Gimli Road and the five foot side yard. Should council wish to approve this application, the variance is limited to what has been presented. Any further changes will require a new variance approval. The applicant will be required to obtain all permits from our office and the applicant obtain any required approvals from Manitoba Infrastructure if required.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions? Marvin Fred Land, uh, Landry, um, you're the applicants. Are you present? Do you have anything to add to your application?
No, this, we just, uh, sent in a letter with our, um, variance indicating the reasons why we needed to put that up front. And I don't know if anybody has read that because we have a gas line and we have a serious, uh, problem. We have a tank on the other side, so we could put it there.
Yes, we already, yeah, thank you. It was all in our package. Thank you. Okay, next item, variation order number one oh seven, two oh two four, sixteen thirty-seven, Hoybrook.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The applicant is seeking council's approval to vary the number of accessory buildings, the combined, uh, square footage as well as the mean height to allow for existing accessory structures to remain in the seasonal residential zone. In the seasonal residential zone, there is a limit, uh, maximum of two accessory buildings and the applicant is proposing three. The combined square footage for accessory buildings is twelve hundred and the applicant is proposing four thousand, four hundred and thirty-four square feet. And the mean height max is fifteen feet and the applicant is proposing nineteen feet. Here is an air photo of the subject property as well as the applicant's site plan, showing the location of the, uh, associated accessory buildings. There are also some elevation drawings of the largest of the accessory buildings here. Should council wish to approve this application, the variance is limited to what has been presented. Any further changes will require a new approval. Uh, the applicant will be required to obtain all permits from the Red River Planning District and the proposed detached accessory structure is not to be used for any type of residential occupancy use classification. Thank you.
Thank you, council members. Do you have any questions, Mr. Planner? Hey, Mike Clausen, you're present, you're the applicant. Did you wish to add to your application?
I do.
Oh, there you are.
Good evening, Mayor Seale and council. I'm here, uh, to represent, uh, Gladys Lawson and Don Clausen. They're the owners of the property. They're my parents. They have owned this property since nineteen eighty. When they purchased it, I'm just going to give you a quick background on the history of the property. Uh, they purchased it with four buildings on it. It was cottage, guest cottage, a detached garage and a summer kitchen. Of those original buildings, just the detached twenty-four by twenty-four garage still exists. Uh, they built their forever home in nineteen eighty-seven and they still live there today. Uh, my parents are in their late seventies and, and eighties and early eighties, so they asked me to come and speak on their behalf. Um, so with regards to the shop, um, I just want to assure the, that, uh, assure you that it is going to be used for storage purposes only. I did provide pictures to the RM and to Red River Planning, just kind of showing that the shop is impactful. Uh, the detached garage that was there, what the original structure is also, uh, full. Uh, the third building is a Kodiak Shelter. It's a soft covered shelter that is also very full. Um, it is our family's intention to maintain this property in our family for hopefully, you know, decades, if, if not, uh, longer. Um, I, I feel that the, um, number of buildings and the square footage, um, kind of falls outside of, I don't want to say falls outside of the zoning by law requirements, but due to the fact that there's twelve point three acres here of which five and a half acres are, uh, land, um, approximately seven acres is in the water. Um, for only those three buildings combined are under two percent uh, of the property, uh, when you look at surrounding properties, that's fairly insignificant in comparison. The reason for the size of the new shop, which is fifty by sixty, is, uh, for future planning, if you, if there's going to be a, like a class A motorhome, for example, um, a forty foot, forty-five foot motorhome needs at least fifty feet and thirteen feet height. Um, we did, um, in the planning, uh, process, we did ask to, uh, change the trusses on the roof to a scissor truss so that we can keep the outside walls to a minimum. Uh, in order to have a thirteen foot high vehicle go in the building, uh, you need a fourteen foot high door. Uh, which is typically a sixteen foot high building at that height. Using a scissor, scissor truss, we kept the outside walls to fourteen feet, which allows to have a, a larger span in the middle of the building. A taller span. Um, the, uh, yeah, so that's, there's a couple of other items, but I can maybe address those if you have questions. Um,
Hey, council members, do you have any questions? The applicant, Councillor Siker?
Um, are, are you saying storage now, you're going to keep it forever, blah, blah, that's all of the sense, I do not, I'm not, but it makes me wonder if, would it be a reasonable thought to add to a condition that at no time can this be converted to any kind of residential living space?
Hmm. So one of the conditions is, is included there that the detached accessory building is not to be used for any type of residential occupancy.
So I'm, I'm.
Sorry, I didn't read that.
Yeah, I'm good with the conditions that are proposed by Red River by all three conditions.
Any further questions? Very nicely done. Next item is variation order number one oh nine, two oh two four, one four five six, three zero point.
Madam Planner, please. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, this is a, um, a variance associated with an improved subdivision and the applicant is seeking to vary the site area and site width for proposed lot from forty acres to eight point eight seven acres and a site width from three hundred feet to a hundred and sixty-two feet and change. Here is an air photo of the site as well as the subdivision, uh, subdivision application map that has already been given conditional approval. Should council wish to approve this application, it's limited to what is being presented. Any further changes would require a new approval and the applicant owner obtain any required permits from the RRPD. Thank you.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions? Okay, and then dealing with the same, oh, sorry, we have the applicant, Dionne MacIver. Would you like to speak to the application?
Um, there is the other lot, which is on the application, one second, I'm sorry.
It's, it's the same matter, but it's under two different applications.
Oh.
Okay, because the next one is, uh, a variation order as well, same. Okay, um, Hannah Stewart?
Yeah, I got it.
Nothing to add? Okay, thank you. And council member, do you have any question? Okay, next item is variation number one one ten, two oh two four, row number four oh nine, six hundred, three zero point row.
So this is part two of the, uh, the subdivision, uh, that we, or the variance and subdivision that we saw earlier. And the applicant is proposing to vary the site area from forty acres to ten point six seven acres. And again, here is the, uh, location map as well as the subdivision application map that has been conditionally approved. And again, uh, variance is limited to what is being proposed and the applicant's required to obtain any permits from our office if required.
Thank you. Council members, any questions? Okay, hearing eighteen men. That's the end of our public hearings. Here we tell the council hereby close public hearings for the November twelfth planning applications. Could I have a mover, please? Mayor Dornbos, seconded by Councillor Siker, on favor.
Aye.
Resolution for decision. For conditional use number twenty-five, two oh two four. Where is the applicant owner of tax roll number one eight four three, to meet application for conditional use number twenty-five, two oh two four, for the premises described as eighteen Yorkville Crescent. The purpose is the applicant is requesting approval to establish a crematorium on the subject property. A site plan, drawings and letter of intent has been submitted by the applicant, which is attached to this report. Therefore, be it resolved if the conditional use twenty-five, two oh two four is hereby approved or denied by council with following conditions, and the conditions were outlined by the, um, plan. So to get this on the table, could I have a mover, please? Mayor Dornbos, seconder. Councillor Mondor, now council discussion. Mayor Dornbos.
Um, I just got a few things to say here. I, I know that Mr. Gill owns a very successful trucking company and, uh, and I think that's absolutely wonderful. Um, I like to think that St. Andrews is open for business and, uh, uh, again, I want to, uh, bring up that I'm on the airport board. We have a corporal, uh, crematorium at the airport. We're the tenth busiest airport in Canada and not one person has come up and brought anything to our attention about that crematorium being an issue, especially with the established businesses that are there already. So, and as councillor Hunt had mentioned before too, and he's been there longer than I have and, uh, he's, he's, he's also said that there has not been an issue. So I like to think that St. Andrews is open for business, uh, crematoriums, uh, you know, a low volume in, in my opinion, and the traffic would be minimal. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any further comments, like councillor, councillor Morecki?
Yes, uh, um, at the end of the day, what we have is we have an industry that has a, uh, uh, that operates a very high heat permissive that puts out, um, uh, a lot of toxic type material. Uh, and I have to ask, ask myself, would I want to live near that place? And my answer is no, not. Uh, so that would be my position on it.
Thank you. Councillor Siker, you have one? Councillor Mondor?
I just, uh, did a little research into, uh, in regards to the, um, potential, uh, things coming out of the stack of the, uh, crematorium and it did indicate that there would be, uh, toxic chem, toxic chemicals and whatnot and, uh, I kind of concur with, uh, councillor Morecki that I would not want to, uh, live next to, uh, any. Are you, the council table recording?
Um, I, I think both arguments have, um, you know, valid, uh, uh, you know, reasoning for why they're here today. Um, I think based on, you know, she, she indicated, the applicant indicated there was, you know, a, a one percent chance, um, or, uh, a low risk of any type of odor, um, smoke, visible smoke. Um, and on the other hand, there's, uh, a company next door that has food trailers that, um, have to intake, um, the surrounding air. Yeah, I, I love to think, you know, a, any chance is not a good chance for any type of odor smell to be near the facility like that.
Councillor Siker?
I appreciate the trucking company. I appreciate everyone that has purchased property in the park. But I am very proud to say St. Andrews is open for business. And at this stage of, of the development, we have a someone that lives in St. Andrews that has purchased property that is at the stage to develop a business in that park. Once this is passed, boom, she can get this business up and running. I, 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 I applaud everybody else. When our open business is in there, I really don't see why we can't all work together. But I would have to say that I would, um, vote to approve it for the fact of, I, I don't want to be judgmental of what kind of business is kind of campy and our zoning and our, our industrial, all of that stuff, I did research on that. Um, it, it does line up, hence why this resident, or this business owner needs to apply for a conditional use. With the conditional use, the resident is in line to use that, to have that business in park. park, business park. The business owner has stated that there will be no signage on it, there's no one outside, there's no traffic, there's no parking issues. There, and, and the bottom line in my mind is this St. Andrews residence is trying to open a business in St. Andrews is ready to go. Money's there, everything's lined up, building starts the minute they get the conditional use. And it's unfortunate that she had to wait this long for the conditional use due to the lags who are the
Councilor Morecki?
Yes, if I could just draw council's attention to the testimonials from from Selkirk, the folks that live close to the the two crematoriums there, Douglas Fish Company, K and M Wood Company, and the O'Neal in Selkirk and they're all all the testimonials are negative and they speak of odor and smell and whatnot, so I would kind of hope that we would learn from Selkirk and stays.
Councilor Siker?
Um, just, I looked up the Donald Pick Company Google, I couldn't find it. It didn't come up. Greenwood Avenue, I've lived in Selkirk, St. Andrews for unfortunately four to five years. And Greenwood used to be nothing on it. And it has exploded. I went to the dentist office the other day, it amazed me what there is on Greenwood Avenue now. We used to go practice driving on that street because there was nothing on it. So that crematorium that's on it for the odd person that works at one of these buildings, and sometimes that's what it comes down to, it's just one rental employee that will give a statement. Greenwood Avenue in Selkirk and I would hope that the industrial park in St. Andrews will continue to boom with a crematorium on it, just like Greenwood does and the airport sides where the crematorium is, because Deputy Mayor Dornbos is correct, the airport has really boomed, even just in the last couple of years since we have all been lucky enough to be on council. And I just think that the open for business and that's everybody's business, no matter what kind of business you want to bring into it.
Counselor Hunt, you have comments?
Yeah, just similar to what I said before with the crematorium in the airport's been there since two thousand and two or two thousand and three with no concerns. As far as complaints from Selkirk, I'm not sure where they come from. There's a body shop within a close proximity and we all know what fumes come out of, out of a body shop, dust and fumes. There's a chemical hazardous waste retention center just a block away as well as there's two buildings there that store agricultural chemicals. There was a comment made about foods, food in the area, whatever. The other thing is, it was comments made about trucks don't have noxious fumes from them because they're all DPF trucks and and emission controlled, but reefers aren't. So anything in, in a reefer truck for cooling or for freezing, those engines and those trucks run twenty-four seven in a yard before they're come in and awaited to be delivered. Those, those engines aren't emission controlled, so there is fumes from them which is right in front of the food that is going to be used. So there's no concerns with them. And I think that's all I have on my list here.
Thank you.
And like I say, there, you know, we have an industrial park. We expect people to go in those with businesses. It's a successful industrial park. It got sold out in no time, just like the, like just like the present one that is beside the airport now, it was sold out rather quickly. There is diversified businesses in there and I'm sure you could find faults with every one of them that emitting odors or noise or whatever, that's not a business that somebody likes, but they're, but they're there and they're better than in residential neighborhoods. So I'm in support of it.
Thank you. Well, the only comments I have, weighing all the comments on both sides. As Deputy Mayor Dornbos said from the airport, and I've been on council since twenty fourteen and I've never heard of a complaint coming out of Propos at the airport property. The applicant has stated it's Matthews Environmental System. It's one of the latest, I assume, high-tech systems on the market. She clearly stated there's no smoke, but a heat ripple, and if there was smoke, it was limited to less than a minute. One of the concerns raised by those in opposition was the parking number of public. It was made clear that's very, very limited, so they're very good. Will bring the bodies, will drive straight into a grad, so there's no public view. Um, it's not there's no existing concerns. Those are my comments. So are every, everybody ready to take a vote?
I just, I just had one more comment and the biggest thing, it's licensed under the province of Manitoba, you know, so obviously they've done their due diligence and done their research and if there was any problems with any of these crematoriums buildings or around, they wouldn't be licensing it or they would be putting further guidelines or in, 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 you know, that we wouldn't have these problems then, so, or, or these
variations?
Yes, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we had Deputy Mayor Dornbos was the mover, Councilor Mondor was the seconder. The, therefore be it resolved, the conditional use application be hereby approved by council with the following conditions. They were all outlined by the planner. There's no additional changes. Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The matter has been approved. Next item, resolution for decision for conditional use number one oh two four. Whereas the applicant owner of tax roll number five six one nine hundred and five six two three oh five has made application for conditional use twenty-six two oh two four for the first premises described as lots four, four, five and eight, plan one nine three one four Kramer Road. The purpose is the applicant is proposing to establish a farming colony, hermit colony, which would consist of residents in connection with agriculture, industrial operation. The proposals included an initial twenty-eight housing units, which would eventually expand to a maximum builder of forty-three units. Mano buildings including a kitchen, cold storage, dining hall, church, school, gym and room. There would also be an industrial area featuring shops, steel stores, light manufacturing facilities, livestock processing facilities and maintenance facilities. And proposed intensity of uses for this application is outlined in the letter of intent and sub and site plan. Therefore, be it resolved that conditionally use application number two oh two six by hereby, be hereby approved by council with the following conditions. The only change as per what was on the screen was item one. And Jennifer, you changed the wording.
Do you want me to read it again, Madam Chair?
Sure, that would be great.
Yeah, I
Put it on the record.
Fine tuned it a little bit. The conditional use be limited to what was presented, noting refinements may occur at the time of building through an application. Significant changes to the proposal will require a new conditional use at the discretion of the development officer.
Thank you. Council is good with that. And the other applications were read out by the planner. Could I have a mover please? Oh, sorry, Councilor.
Can we ask something along the lines of a, a traffic study at some point?
That will be done by MI. When the first, that's how much it was.
Okay.
When this, this is the first date, MI will be involved in it. Could I have a mover please? Deputy Mayor Dornbos, seconder. Councilor Mondor, any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
The matter has been approved. Thank you. Next item, four twenty-nine, whereas issued for decision on variation order number seventy-eight twenty-four. Whereas the applicant owner of tax roll five one five four five oh has made application for variation order number seventy-eight twenty-four with premises described as eight ninety three Hall Road. The purpose is the applicant proposes to reduce the site area in order to allow for proposed lot to be attributed on the residual property. This would satisfy condition number two within the conditional approval letter of subdivision application S twenty-three three oh two two. Therefore, be it resolved that this variation order be hereby approved by council and the conditions were read out by the planner. Could I have a mover please? Counselor Biker, seconder. Counselor Feeblecorn, any further comments? All in favor? Eric? All in favor, I'm abstaining. Next item, four twenty-ten, resolution for decision for variation order ninety-six twenty-four. Whereas the applicant owner of tax roll six four one nine five zero has made application for variation order number ninety-six twenty-four for the premises described as five ninety-three Gimli Road. The purpose is the applicant proposes to reduce the front and interior side yard setbacks in order to allow for a seven hundred and sixty-eight square foot detached accessory structure constructed on the subject property. Therefore, be it resolved that this variation order be hereby approved by council with the following conditions which were shown on the screen and read out by the planner. Could I have a mover please? Counselor Feeblecorn, seconder. Counselor Siker, any further questions or comments? All in favor? Eric, that matter is going to prove. Agenda item number four point one one, resolution for decision for variation order number one oh seven twenty-four. Whereas the applicant owner of tax roll number five two three six hundred has made application for variation order number one oh seven twenty-four for the premises described as sixteen thirty seven void road. The purpose is the applicant proposes to increase the number of accessory buildings, maximum permitted combined building area, and mean height in order to allow for existing accessory structures to remain and a proposed three thousand square foot structure to be constructed on the subject property. Oh, is this where it wrong? I thought, I'm sorry. Some of the structures were taken down already.
Uh, it's to remain on the property.
Oh, okay, thank you. Therefore, be it resolved, variation order number one oh seven twenty-four be hereby approved by council with the conditions of the standard conditions read out by the planner. Could I have a mover please?
I'll move it, my second.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Dornbos, Counselor Hunt. Seconds, any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Matters are proven. Resolution for decision for variation order number one oh nine two four. Whereas the applicant owner of tax roll number four one zero two hundred has made application for the premises described as one four five six breezy point road. The purpose is the applicant proposes to reduce the required minimum site area and site width in order to allow the realignment of the lot boundaries between two titles. This would create two lots, eight point eight seven acres and ten point six seven acres and therefore satisfy condition number four within the conditional approval letter of subdivision application number S twenty-four three zero four eight. Now therefore be it resolved that variation order number one oh nine two four be hereby approved by council with the following conditions. And those were on the screen and those are our standard conditions. Could I have a mover please? Counselor Feeblecorn, seconded by Counselor Biker. Further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution for decision for variation order number one one zero slash twenty-four. Whereas the applicant owner of tax roll four oh nine six hundred has made application for variation order number one one zero twenty-four for the premises described as lot one, plan four seven one one six breezy point road. The purpose is the applicant proposes to reduce the required minimum site area in order to allow the realignment of the lot boundaries between two titles. This would create two lots, eight point eight seven acres and ten point six seven acres and therefore satisfy condition number four within the conditional approval letter of subdivision application S twenty-four three oh four eight. Now therefore be it resolved that variation order number one one zero twenty-four be hereby approved by council with the following conditions which were on the screen and outlined by the planner. Could I have a mover please? Counselor Siker, seconder. Counselor Mondor, any further comments, questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Next item, had option of minutes, our planning force, so you're welcome to stay or thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Pla. Okay, we'll take a five minutes break. Thank you for resuming the council meeting at eight forty-nine. Adoption of the minutes. Be resolved that council adopt the October twenty-second, twenty twenty-four council meeting minutes as presented. Could I have a mover, please? Yes, Mayor Dornboss, second or? Feeblecorn, whether any errors or omissions, all in favor? Eric. Bylaws and policies. Bylaw number four, four, oh, two, business licensing, second. We need to resolve that council give second reading to bylaw four, four, oh, two being the business licensing bylaw as presented. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Sliker, second or? Counselor Morecking? Any questions?
So I have some information to share following the first reading, but if we have any other questions, first I see counselor Hunt has his hand up.
Counselor Hunt?
I just have some comments. I, you know, I understand this bylaw is is pretty old, I think it's almost over twenty years old. And I understand things have to be changed to clean, to clean things up, but I don't agree with the price increase uh on licenses. I think it'll deter people from, from acquiring them. And I don't know how we're going to police that. Um, you know, I understand things have to go up a little bit because it's office time that that does send them out and send out the mailing list and that kind of stuff, so. Um, I don't know, to go from a hundred and hundred dollars to a hundred and fifty is, is kind of steep. As and I say, it's going to deter lots of people from acquiring one, so. I think a minimal increase is warranted because of the timeframe has passed, but that's my comment.
Mayor Dornboss?
I think the original was fifty dollars and a hundred dollars, was, was it not? Fifty dollars for?
Fifty dollars for a home-based, hundred dollars for general business.
And now you're proposing a two hundred dollar flat rate?
Uh, no, no. This latest revision has the home-based businesses a full rate at seventy-five dollars and a general business at one fifty. So a twenty-five dollar increase for home-based, fifty for general. I have some reasoning behind that, I can get into that.
It's only twenty-five dollar change after twenty years and a fifty dollar change after twenty years.
Correct. So since we're talking on fees, I'll get into some info here. Um, revenue from twenty twenty-three business license was eighteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars. That was for forty-three home-based businesses and a hundred and sixty-one general businesses. Uh, this year we're on track to be roughly the same. Uh, reported as of October thirty-first, uh, we're at seventeen thousand in revenue. Uh, forty-six home-based businesses and a hundred and forty-seven general businesses. Now, these are all using the rates from the current bylaw, which was uh written in nineteen ninety-seven and amended in about twenty years ago. So and it had no change on the price, so it's over twenty-five years old are the rates. Uh, so using the Bank of Canada's inflation calculator, the fifty dollar fee from nineteen ninety-seven comparably nowadays is just under ninety dollars, uh, counting for inflation. And the one hundred dollar fee is now equivalent to just under a hundred and eighty. Uh, so I've adjusted the proposed costs of the licenses, both home-based and general to not exceed the inflation rates and then rounded them down to reflect a consistent fee schedule where home-based is half the rate of any general business. And that's kind of what the fee structure reflects right now. There are, there's other information on other wording, but I know we're talking on fees right now, so, yeah.
Counselor Sliker?
Go ahead, go on the next part, sorry, keep going.
Okay, I will jump to the next piece, so I highlighted a few items in here for that were noted on the first reading for, for uh, possible revision or a, a new item that I did include in here. So item three point oh five. Organizer of trade show, farmer's market or community event shall be required to obtain a business license if goods and services are provided in exchange for monetary compensation, so through further research. Uh, generally consistent with other RMs, they typically require a special event permit or for the organizer of the event to obtain a business license. Now, how, as to what level they enforce that, I, I can't say. Uh, but it does provide a level of accountability for these types of events, so that would be the reasoning here. Um, reflective in St. Clement's, East St. Paul, uh, Gimli, and in all these cases, not-for-profits are excluded from the requirements. Uh, at the same time, Gimli also further reiterates that community halls and churches, fundraising initiatives for any of these groups that fall under them are also exempt. So I know we had some questions on that. Um, as, and same thing with item four point oh one, B. Person of a business that rents a stall, table or space as a vendor uh, is exempt from obtaining the license, so it all comes from the organizer. You know, the vendors underneath are uh following their direction, it's their event that they're organizing, so they uh, you know, they're vetting who's coming into these events and who's not, so we have a level of accountability there. And then I did add uh one item, four point oh one, D, just for clarity. Uh, conducting garage sale or estate sales for household items, those are exempt. Shouldn't really need to be said, but it's in there for clarity. That's what I have for the wording anyways.
I have a question for clarification. So you have a Winnipeg resident who is a grocery slipper to their home and brings them to a market in St. Andrews to sell. What kind of license do they have to get? Do they have to pay the
Are they up?
Two hundred dollar license?
Are they setting up a, are they operating a business? Is this just a vendor stall at a community event?
No.
They're a hawker?
Say they're it's retired lady crocheting slippers in her house in, or in Winnipeg. And she wants to enter into a market out here at Petersfield or Lockwood. So what kind of license does she need? She's selling?
The organizer of that trade show would require the license, not the vendor.
Okay.
Not the vendor.
Okay.
So for example, Petersfield Community Market, you know, I don't know the intricacies of their organization, if that's considered a fundraiser or whatnot, but just as an example, uh, just the Petersfield Community Group, whoever's the organizer would have the uh, business license for that event, all the vendors, ten, twenty, thirty, whatever they're approved for, not exceeding, you know, vacancy, capacity issues, they're all good to go and operate underneath them.
Uh, counselor Hunt?
Um, uh, great explanation there, uh, great. Uh, on your fee schedule D there, you have based within the municipality business licenses, general K one hundred and fifty, license renewal one hundred. What does that mean? And then prorated after July first, seventy-five dollars, which is half the year then. And then the same thing with the home, with the home base, you have seventy-five for upfront and then a, a renewal is fifty, what does that mean?
Uh, actually, thanks for touching on that, I completely skipped over that. Uh, so the upfront for a new business that's registering with the municipality, they pay those uh, licenses that are directed at one fifty for general license, seventy-five for a home-based. If they're continuing to conduct business in the following year, it's a renewal. They'll be paying the same rate that they're currently paying right now.
Perfect, that's, that's great. Okay, thank, thank, thank you.
And yeah, and then the prorated is if they apply after that date, it's uh reduced in half, yeah.
Eric, could you explain that again?
Uh, sure, so.
Sorry, there is nothing to repeat.
Uh, so looking at uh, section D. Uh, business license, general, the fee is a hundred and fifty dollars. Let's just say I've started a new uh, mechanical business out of my not out of my property, but in the new industrial park. Let's just say I have a business there and I want to be licensed. It's a new business, uh, we don't have record of it in the municipality. Uh, I would pay the fee of a hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, you know, I conduct my business there for the year of twenty twenty-four. Uh, in twenty twenty-five, our early, like before twenty twenty-five, we send out renewal notices to the businesses uh, notifying them that their business license will expire and if they'd like to renew the posted rate dates to get that all in. Uh, so that rate reflects the current rates, it's not the same full price that's being increased right now.
So basically to start, the bigger like it's a hundred and fifty for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, then it's a hundred dollars, twenty twenty-six, it's a hundred dollars.
If, yes, if I could make it, if you're a new business, you pay a slightly higher rate than what you're paying right now. As a continued business, there's no change.
Very good. Are there any questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a question about the Verbo. The Airbnb rental. Um, I have a suggestion that we make that higher than the business fee that we're, uh, that we have set out here. I think that should be a a much, much larger fee for that.
And I, oh, I, 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 I agree. Uh, I have some info on some short-term rentals from other municipalities. We want to, uh, so not many have this type of bylaws, relatively new. Uh, we do know that our neighbors in Gimli have that. Uh, so I have three comparisons. Um, city of Winnipeg, not really the most uh, applicable in this case, but uh, city of Winnipeg, a short-term rental has a two hundred and sixty dollar annual fee. And anyone who books uh has to pay six percent accommodation fee, which goes to the city of Winnipeg, it's not on the onus of the operator, it's whoever's renting pays that, uh, that fee and it goes to the city. Uh, similarly in Gimli, it's a two hundred dollar annual fee and they have a five percent accommodation tax. So they're collecting revenue from the license itself, but also from anyone who books, five percent of that revenue is going to the municipality.
What is that?
Municipality, oh, the booking, it's, it's booked through the, the Verbo and Airbnb, all the fees has to be included in there. They have a very extensive, yeah.
But what about the Airbnbs? That are registered anywhere? You can't police that?
Not until we have a short-term rental bylaw, which I am working on, it's going to follow the business license, yeah. Uh, one other comparison, RM of Harrison Park. Um, does not require uh, short-term rentals to obtain a business license, however, there's a two hundred dollar annual fee and if applicable, a land titles search. So commonly you're seeing municipalities charge that maximum rate or in some cases above, I'm not sure if they technically have that approval in the city of Winnipeg, I'm sure they do. But Gimli and Harrison Park, uh, full rate on that short-term rental. So I would suggest without having a bylaw for that in front of us, a hundred and twenty-five dollars um, to coincide for a short-term rental bylaw, making it two hundred dollars complete. Or having them completely separate at two hundred dollars for the short-term rental and then seventy-five for your home-based or having them completely separate at two hundred dollars for the short-term rental, and then seventy-five for your home-based business license.
I think they should be separate on the sheet. And I think that the percentage is a good idea as well, to generate income.
It's a great idea. It requires ministerial approval. It's a lengthy process. Could take, could take some time. I think it took Gimli almost a year, yeah.
Counselor, what you're saying, on the, how, I agree, separate?
Yeah, like on the fee schedule, like on the fee schedule, have, uh, like a short-term rental Airbnb, Verbo, uh, just a separate line item there and what the cost would be.
So as it stands right now, it's identified on there that if it's a short-term rental, Airbnb, Verbo, yes, um, the idea was to have the short-term rental coincide with this. Um, scheduling didn't quite work out, but I can remove that piece, uh, the short-term rental and have it completely separate and a completely separate application form. That's just there for information for the business licensing, licensing itself, not for validating if, you know, they can or can't operate that short-term rental inspections, et cetera. So if it's preferred to have them completely separate, I have no issues, uh, removing that portion.
And I'd like to see the maximum amount, uh, charged to them as well. So if Winnipeg's charging two sixty, I'd like to see us charge two fifty.
I don't, uh, comment to that. I don't, I think the max that we're allowed to, uh, charge for that is two hundred, due to us being a rural municipality, uh, urban or cities have a slightly more, but, uh, yes, I agree that the max rate there should apply.
But everything else looks wonderful.
Thank you.
I did a little bit of, when I saw it came up, if they did Google search of Airbnb for St. Andrews, and twenty-six of them came up. Oh, that's right. A lot of them are like Matlock, that area, and I'm assuming they, people with their cabins, like, not telling you to do it. So, yeah.
When you think about it, that's not even one night stay in one of these places. Usually, they charge like a hundred dollars, so that's not a big fee to these people, right, so.
Okay, so what is the agreement with counsel? That we're gonna do this as a separate?
Uh, if we'd like to see if
Separate. Cause you're working on a separate reg, short-term reg.
Yeah, separate bylaw. So if you'd like to see that portion rem- removed, but how does that work for approvals tonight? If there's a
If you have the, if you know what you're changing, we will, uh, pass it as amended.
Okay.
And then we have, if you want to go to the reading, then it's passed as presented. If those are the only changes, and everybody's okay.
Counselor Schlecker. I did some thought today, and haven't answered your question after, Counselor Hunt. You're correct. This is all, there is no way to police this or do whatever. Uh, it, it's like on the honest system. I've always had been in the RM for the last twenty years. Here's the bright side, I see to this, is this opens bylaws department to, to have a reason to follow up. Example, somebody reports an Airbnb and it's a big party and it's this and it's that. If we have a, a business license required for that type of, uh, thing, bylaw can now open, you know, go knock on the door and say, excuse me, can I see your business license? Which in turn can then open some other doors, right? Some places that we find that are, you know, they have a lot of stuff on their property back in the bush, or, you know, and, uh, somebody's poking around, like
We're dealing with
That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm talking about, is this policy putting in place will open up the doors to help the bylaw and help the RM overall. Cause it's an opening to, to communicate with the taxpayers of what's going on on their property and what they're doing. And it would be a help, I would assume, Jordan, am I correct or wrong?
Uh, I, I mean, yeah, that's, opens up a lot more work, possibly, for us. But I mean, technically, you're right.
Okay, any further comment?
Uh, no, none for me.
Okay, so it be resolved that council gives second reading to bylaw number four oh two, the bylaw as amended. And we have Counselor Schlecker, Luber, Counselor Morecki, Seconder, all in favor. Counselor Hunt, in favor, carry. So then we put over third reading until the next meeting?
It's up to, if you want to see the final draft before you vote it in, you can hold it over, or if you're comfortable with those changes, as is, you can pass it tonight.
Okay.
Change it tonight. Yeah.
Okay. Bylaw number four four oh two, business licensing, third reading. Be it resolved that council give third reading to bylaw number four four oh two, being the business licensing bylaw as presented. Or is it still?
Nope, this is presented.
As presented, yes, correct. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Schlecker, Seconder, Counselor Morecki, all in favor. Carry. Bylaw four three nine eight, fire prevention or emergency services, second reading. Be resolved that council give second reading to bylaw number four three nine eight, being fire prevention and emergency services bylaw as presented. Could I have a mover, please? Deputy Mayor Doranbaugh, Seconder, Counselor Feeblecorn, comment? Is it, was there change? There was changes from the last one. There was discussion at the last meeting.
Jordan, were you able to just indicate, um, what areas were adjusted, or if there's any changes from the?
There was no changes required on this one.
Okay, that was, that was a different one, right? But that's not on the agenda.
That was, that was the, uh, the policy that is just being reworked.
Any further comment? So then be resolved, council give second reading to bylaw four three nine eight, being the fire prevention or emergency services bylaw as presented. Oh, Deputy Mayor Doranbaugh, move. Counselor Feeblecorn, Seconded, all in favor. Carry. Bylaw four three nine eight, third reading, fire prevention or emergency services bylaw. Be resolved that council give third reading to bylaw four three nine eight, being the fire prevention or emergency services bylaw as presented. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Schlecker, Seconder. Counselor Hunt, any further comments, questions? All in favor. Carry. Bylaw four four oh five, burning bylaw to control open fires, second reading. Be resolved that council give second reading to bylaw number four four oh five, being the burning bylaw to control open fires as presented. Could I have a mover, please? Deputy Mayor Doranbaugh, Seconded by Counselor Mondor, any further comments? There was, was this one, there was discussion on last night?
Yeah, the discussion was, um, that it needed a permit for, uh, backyard fire, but, um, I think it looks like it was changed, right, Jordan? Like something was reworded in here or moved around?
Uh, not this one, no, it was, uh, I believe the concern was about, um, uh, like a backyard fire, but, um, we specified in, in a pit, in a fire pit, and then we also specified what the specifications were in that fire pit. And we provided the definitions.
Any further comments, questions? All in favor. Carry. Bylaw four four oh five, burning bylaw to control open fires, third reading. Be resolved that council give third reading to bylaw number four four oh five, being the burning bylaw to control open fires as presented. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Feeblecorn, Seconder, Counselor Schlecker, any further comments? All in favor. Carry. Next item, approval of accounts. Be resolved that council approved in November twenty twenty-four, check detail report as presented. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Mondor, Seconder, Counselor Schlecker. Any further comments? Counselor Schlecker.
Six questions presented and, uh, very well answered, so thank you, Steph.
Any further comments? All in favor. Carry. Respondents for action. Oh, I don't have a resolution on this one. Um, it's the, we received in the package, there's a, um, request for the Selkirk Santa Parade of Lights. Uh, there's an email and the entry form. It's on November twenty-third in Selkirk. It's like, I call it the Christmas parade. Um, normally, the South Hall goes in, and we've been riding in the back of the trailer, but I am advised by Lisa that they don't have any room. Is there any interest to enter into the Christmas, the Santa parade? I vote.
I think even the Conde Boy Fire Department going in and
I think South Hall is as well.
We've got two fire departments, two separate departments.
Well, then maybe Conde Boy has room for mayor council.
I, I don't know what, cause I think they're only doing one truck, cause they don't want to overcrowd the parade with too many fire trucks, right, so.
Okay, cause normally it would be a trailer with hay bales on it.
I'm not sure what the plan is for that.
Okay, so is there anything to put in, anything else? Okay, so then we'll table it for information. My name is to Petersfield Community Club Breakfast with Santa. Donation request, um. They have requested silent auction prizes to be provided. It's at their Breakfast with Santa on December seventh. Could I have a mover, please? Deputy Mayor Doranbaugh, Seconder. Counselor Morecki, Counselor Schlecker.
I'm going to abstain from this as I am on, uh, directed on the Peter Field Community Club.
Okay, all in favor. Carry. Remember safe service. Be resolved that mayor still be authorized to attend at the Selkirk Royal Canadian Agents for members' safe service, which now November left Selkirk. Could I have a mover, please? Deputy Mayor Doranbaugh, Seconder, Counselor Mondor. Um, Deputy Mayor Doranbaugh was there as well, but we don't charge for this as per a bylaw, any event, so, so all in favor. Carry. Manitoba Softball Hall of Fame Advertising Support Request. Be resolved that council authorize the purchase of a hundred dollar business card ad in support of the Manitoba Softball Hall of Fame and Museum's induction banquet being held May third, twenty twenty-five in Winnipeg. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Feeblecorn, Seconder. Deputy Mayor Doranbaugh's discussion. It's not, there's no one here that's, a hundred dollar sponsorship was approved in twenty twenty-four.
Table it for information.
I would say table it for information.
Yeah, I would agree.
But we, it says that the hundred dollar sponsorship was already approved for the twenty twenty-four induction banquet, so.
Where were that?
I don't, I don't recall it, but it's something else.
I think this was, this came up, cause this, what they're asking for now was next May, so last year in twenty twenty-three, I think it was a special induction of some, some, uh, some St. Andrews involvement, so we gave a hundred thousand.
Okay.
Thousand. God, I'm tired, it's time to go. Gave a hundred dollars in twenty twenty-one.
So we'll just table, table it for info. Um. Eastern Tule Lake, uh, RHA Strategic Focus Meeting. Be resolved that be authorized to attend the Tule Lake Eastern Regional Health Authority Strategic Focus Virtual Meeting being held November twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, uh, at nine thirty a.m. Could I have a mover, please?
We have a Star Financial Support Request, nine point five, I think.
Okay, just a, well, well, I'm sorry. Okay, Counselor Feeblecorn, Seconder, Deputy Mayor Doranbaugh. I'm not able to attend. I did attend, um, the last one a couple weeks ago. Um, I know counsel, I think we've discussed this, medical is a provincial matter. I went for information purposes, for, because we have Selkirk care as our main health parade. I will not be attending. I don't think I need to say it, but there was really nothing we could contribute to. So can we just table this for information as well? Oh, cause I don't have a resolution on it. Um, Star Financial Support Request. What it may have? How much?
Uh, dollar to two dollar cap, or make an annual donation of your choice.
Um, so, well, okay, we could put this over for budget discussion. Cause if it's gonna be for capita, that's quite an amount. We all don't have that in this year's budget. Um, or we want to do a one-time donation.
Do we know what we've done previously? Does anyone know more?
We haven't, not yet. We, we're all members of ARM. They give was it seven thousand, seven thousand one hundred and five?
Uh, no, that was split between five organizations, so it was like thirteen
Thirteen hundred, you're right. So, um.
Put that to the budget, like you say. So we do the service that is vital to, to all municipal.
New function on
And they work on all of that, yeah?
And
I'd like to get a line on the, the budget.
I think we should make it a budget line item, too. So can we table this to put over for the budget, the budget discussion? Nine point seven, proclamation of local government to wear in this week. Whereas community participation in municipal elections is important, and whereas community involvement in local government decision-making is essential to a healthy democratic system. And whereas community understanding of municipal government operations and the services it provides is of primary importance to meaningful participation at the local level. Now therefore, be it known that the council of the arm of St. Andrews does hereby proclaim the week of November twenty-fourth to the thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, as local government awareness week. Could I have a mover, please? Counselor Morecki, Seconder. Counselor Feeblecorn, all in favor. Carry. Selkirk Food Bank, Lieutenant Governor Neville. Be resolved that mayor still be authorized to attend the Selkirk Food Bank Sharing Hope Initiative Event with the Honorable Lieutenant Governor Anita Neville on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four in Selkirk. Could I have a mover, please? Deputy Mayor Doranbaugh, Seconder. Counselor Feeblecorn, all in favor. Carry, thank you. Manitowoc Valley Caucus Meeting. Be resolved that Counselor Hunt be authorized to have attended the Manitowoc Valley Caucus Meeting, which was held on November eighth, twenty twenty-four in Selkirk with his online attendance. Could I have a mover, please? Deputy Mayor Doranbaugh, Seconder, Counselor Morecki, all in favor. Carry. Next item is correspondence for information. Does anybody have any comments? Or regarding the information items? Deputy Mayor Doranbaugh.
Uh, nice to see the recycling, uh, rebate and amount of, uh, the tons of recycling in the RM.
Counselor Schlecker.
Um, just a clarification, cause I had a conversation with someone. Uh, the audit financial for RRPD on here is, yes, the twenty-two, the three, the number I gave everybody of the nine, five, five hundred thousand for the last two years that I've been on RRPD. Just wanted to clear that out. Well, this
Oh, you totaled the
For two years. I, I would talk for the time I've been on the board. So for the two years that I've been on the board, they are nine hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty-two cents. Um, out.
Yeah, but no, according to the statement, they're only four hundred and something.
For twenty twenty-three.
Yes.
But I've been on the board for two years, but twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
The statement is just for twenty twenty.
I know.
Not the year before. So that shouldn't be totaled together, cause it sounded like we were in, RRPD was in the, the red, for nine hundred and something thousand. For nine hundred and something thousand.
Yeah, over two year pay, over a two year pay.
But what is before everyone is just, it's not a combined twenty two, twenty three financial statement. It's just the twenty three financial statement. So it shouldn't be that.
Very good.
Thank you. Um, old unfinished business library agreements, contract signings. Whereas the Gainer Family Regional Library will be expanding its leased area of the building to provide increased library services to area residents. And whereas the library partners agreed to the changes in lease space and library services outlined in the agreement. Therefore, be it resolved that council authorized Mayor Saul to execute. The library lease agreement, co-ownership agreement, and services agreement as presented. And further be it resolved that council of the arm of St. Andrews authorized administration. To issue payment to the city of Selkirk. In the amount of four hundred and fourteen thousand, two, two hundred and twenty nine dollars and seventy one cents. From the General Reserve Fund, being the proportionate lease amount minus to retain lease amount as outlined in the co-ownership agreement. Could I have a mover, please? Deputy Mayor Dornbos, seconder. Council Feeble Corn, does anybody, everything is attached, but does anybody have to speak to you? Deputy Mayor Dornbos.
Uh, thank CEOs for, it was a long time coming and I'm glad to see it done. So thank you, Brent, Deepak and Dwayne for getting it all together.
Any further questions or comments? All, all in favor? Carrie. One O two Donald Road Tower Amending Agreement. Whereas Bell has a current lease agreement with the arm of St. Andrews for the property located at one O two Donald Road. Where the current communications tower is located. And whereas Bell has requested to increase lease area to accommodate a shared tower use by Rogers. Therefore, be it resolved that council authorized admin to execute the amending agreement with Bell to increase the lease area. To. Collocate to mail telecommunication equipment at this Donald Road site. Could I have a mover, please? Council Siker, your seconder. Council Morecki, did, did anyone want to speak to this?
I, I cannot speak to it quickly. This is the tower at the fire department, the South Hall. So, um, we've had a lease with Bell for many, many years. Uh, council's direction, several cons spin to try and collocate the, the towers for getting tower applications. And saying, put it on the fire hall there, so we're not putting up new towers that people are objecting to. So last year they expanded to have ExploreNet. This year they have a request for Mount Rogers, so each time they have equipment, so we're expanding the leased area. On the ground for them to, um, locate their equipment on.
So they're not putting up another tower?
No, no, they're just using the same tower, but they need extra space because they have equipment that's, that's securing the ground.
Any further questions? All in favor? Carrie. Road naming. Be resolved that council accept the recommendation and authorize these requested road names of Peterborough Land. And Brackmont South Road as part of phase three of subdivision number S twenty four, three oh five seven. Could I have a mover, please? Deputy Mayor Dornbos, seconder, Council Morecki, did that man want to speak to this?
Uh, yeah, very briefly, this is a request to name, uh, the two roads for the phase three of the Heatherdale Developments. Uh, subdivision off of Donald Road or Rossdale Kilmani Place is the name most referred to. Uh, and they've submitted, you know, a letter with detailing their Scottish heritage, just similar to phase two. Uh, that was done last year with the two, uh, road name requests. Uh, so the cul-de-sac, they're proposing Tay River Lane. Uh, and then for the, uh, straightaway, they're proposing Brackmont Farm Road. Uh, it was discussed with the developer whether or not Morecki Road would continue to be used. If we did, it would just open a plethora of issues with civic addressing. Uh, the properties on Morecki start very low in the civic addressing and to change everybody. Uh, I don't really feel that it's warranted to have everybody go through their records and update all their information, so a new name, uh, was selected, uh, and they've, uh. They've requested Brackmont Farm Road.
Okay, uh, T River, I've got it on the resolution, T River land. It should be lane?
Lane, yeah.
Okay, that's an amendment to the agenda. Um, any further comments? All in favor?
Sorry, excuse me, sorry about first.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Dornbos, Council Morecki.
I also request that we pass a resolution to extend the meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Be resolved that the council of the arm of St. Andrews extended time we were really needing to, it's from five o' ten PM.
Thank you. Could I have a mover, please? Council Siker, seconded by Deputy Mayor Dornbos, all in favor? Carrie. Okay. RFD Bruno Drain Contract Award. Whereas municipality issued request for proposal RFP twenty twenty four dash zero three for the detailed analysis of the Bruno Drain catchment area. And whereas two submissions were received and evaluated. And whereas RJ Burnside and Associates provided the best technical services and clear project understanding for the lower cost. Now therefore, be it resolved that the arm of St. Andrews Council award the proposed submission to RJ Burnside and Associates. In the amount of seventy seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty two dollars. Plus taxes and authorized ARM administration to execute the contracts. And further be it resolved that fifty thousand of the cost be funded per the approved twenty twenty four budget. And further be it resolved that the remaining cost of twenty seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty two dollars. Will be budgeted in the following year brackets twenty twenty five budget. Could I have a mover, please? Deputy Mayor Dornbos, seconder. Council Mondoar. With Braden, did you wish?
Yeah, I could speak to this. So this was my capital request from previous, uh, budget, uh, budget time. Uh, at the time it wasn't, uh, a cost wasn't really quite sure, so we estimated at fifty thousand. Uh, we released the RFP. And received two submissions, uh, both above, uh, the estimated amount, slightly so the other, you know, a lot more in comparison. Both proposals offered a clear understanding of the project and proposals of work to fulfill the obligations and. Provide us with the information we're looking for, uh, to prepare a drainage catchment of the area and as well as develop a moratorium. Through all the mapping and, uh, overland flooding and modeling that they do through their various, uh, engineering products. So with that being said, our, uh, our evaluation team went through the two and determined that the appropriate. Uh, consultant to go with was RJ Burnside and Associates. Now it was an unapproved budget item of fifty thousand, uh, for twenty twenty four. So I've indicated that, uh, the residual of twenty seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty two dollars will be budgeted the following year. Uh, they've indicated they do monthly invoicing and the project is expected to be completed around the end of September of twenty twenty. Five, so their invoicing would match, uh, into the following year as well.
Any questions? I have a question. Okay, we've had all these surveys and everything done by John Arthur. Over the years since I've been on council, because this is the worst drainage area of the ARM. So are they going to be using some of that information?
Absolutely, so.
Or everything?
So we're going to be providing them with all of our information that we have, the latest and greatest LiDAR information, our survey information. Uh, Bruno Drain flood, overland flood level, uh, information. Uh, from previous years, like what the level is at, at all the intersections with Donald Road, uh. Church Road, all those, uh, intersecting roads with that is all information they'll use. They'll be collecting their own survey data to. Uh, quantify the catchment area itself, because there may be areas that we don't have or it's too far outdated to be relevant. So they'll review all the data they, we provide them with, get their own data to coincide with that. Over the winter, do some of their, uh, water modeling that they utilize, uh, come up with their whole volumes, all the engineering. Uh, works that go into that, and then they'll be meeting with us regularly for progress, and then if required. The following spring melt, if more survey information is required, they'll go and collect it at that point.
Wonderful. So then they will provide recommendations or like how to try and solve this major drainage problem.
So, so the idea with the project is they're going to identify the drainage catchment area and areas that should not be approved for development. Or if they are approved for development, should have a clear requirement that an engineered drainage plan is required with. Post-development runoff not exceeding pre-development. We're going to make that very clear. So that we're not approving development where it shouldn't be. We're going to have flood prone issues. So that's goal one, and further to that, which is separate from the RFP, we'll issue a moratorium to enact that ordinance to actually make it proper. So if an application was received in that area at Red River Planning. Unfortunately, no, until the drainage concerns are alleviated, we can't support it at this time unless you have that engineering. Uh, drainage study for your specific parcel. And then at the same time, this will identify possible solutions to. Uh, aid the Bruno catchment area. So there's several other drains and areas that feed into it that are separate in their modeling. We'll uncover more of that, uh, but to go any further than that with actual engineered solutions would require. Uh, a follow-up to create those engineered plans. But at least we'll have their professional recommendation.
Perfect. At least this is a start. It's been years, years. Okay, uh. Deputy Mayor Dornbos move, seconded by Council Mondoar, all in favor? Carrie. Center Hall MFR Truck. Whereas the truck purchase then outfitted Center Hall Medical First Response. That approved in the twenty two, twenty twenty four capital budget has exceeded the original budget amounts. And whereas the new truck purchase is not usable for the MFR purpose until it is properly equipped. And whereas Manitoba Health in coordination with Manitoba Shared Health. Require vehicle state fees on all MFR vehicles to grant the twenty twenty five land emergency medical assault on system license. Therefore, be it resolved that council, council authorized the use of the surplus funds. From the Center Hall twenty twenty four capital budget to be used to outfit the MFR truck. And the balance required for this equipment purchase and installation to be funded by the Center Hall operating budget. Budget. Could I have a mover, please? Deputy Mayor Dornbos, seconder. Council Siker, did anybody wish to speak to this?
Uh, yeah. So unfortunately, uh, um, the person who really should be speaking on this is no longer with us anymore, so we have to just. We have to just go with what, what we know now. So, uh, the original truck was budgeted for fifty thousand, um. Uh, there was a miscommunication between myself and the fire chief, uh, they then purchased the, the current truck that they have now, uh, for forty one thousand. Which only left, uh, a little over eight thousand to, uh, to outfit it with lights. Uh, decals, radios, and a box cap for proper storage of the MFR equipment in the back of the truck. Um, currently, right now, we have, uh, quotes that came in for the remaining pieces, so the light package radios and box cap coming in at about twenty four thousand. Uh, nine hundred and twenty one. Uh, residual funds left over from Senator Hall's capital requests, um. Sits around twenty one thousand, five fifty seven. So there would be a remaining thirty, thirty four, sixty four that would come out of the existing operating budget. Um, the reason why we're asking for this is, again, that, that breakdown between myself and the previous chief, um. Was the fifty thousand was to ensure that the truck was on road operating as intended, um. I'm not sure, again, I cannot speak to where the breakdown in communication came from, but nonetheless, we are here. Now we have a truck that is sitting, uh, currently that cannot be used for its intended purposes. The current MFR truck that, uh, we would be replacing requires a safety. From Manitoba Health and Shared Health, that truck will not pass a safety. I don't find it, um. Efficient to try to get a safety for that vehicle to put it on the road and get it into operation. Um, I don't foresee our license being in jeopardy, but it does, uh, create a, a problem with shared health and Manitoba Health.
Could you repeat? So, okay, the truck that was purchased, this was under the last budget for forty one thousand?
Yes, ma'am. Your honor.
And how much? Is now coming out of the operating budget? What is?
Uh, we would be taking thirty three hundred out of the operating budget as the. Twenty one thousand or the twenty four thousand left to outfit the truck and put it on the road into operation, um. The budget would not currently be able to absorb that.
Sorry, you kind of cut out there. What is the amount?
Uh, the amount that we're requesting. To come out of the capital funds would be twenty one thousand, five fifty seven. The operating budget currently would not be able to absorb that amount.
So Jordan, what you're doing is you're redirecting money that wasn't spent on capital purchases?
That's right, it's residual. So we were able to come in under, under the, uh, original budgeted amount for a lot of the, um, uh, pieces that we. That we purchased for whatever reason those may be, again, um. Ed is not here to speak on, on why those things came under budget. Um, but we do have a residual amount from the original, uh, we requested back in March.
So why we brought this to the council is, is that we, we, uh. Some of our other purchases in capital came low. And we want to redirect those funds from capital towards this. And, but we won't do that unless council's aware. And council gives us a, a resolution to do that, right? So we're not spending more money than we were originally going to spend for, for the most part. But we won't do it without council knowing, right? We want to be transparent. We don't want to do things on capital and go. Well, we didn't use money here and we'll use it there, uh, unless council's aware.
Okay, so to clarify, so the twenty one, five, five, seven is coming out of the south, out of, out of the Center Hall budget? Or it's coming out of the ARM budget? This is coming out of the fire budget?
It's coming out of the capital budget for fire.
Yeah, okay, that's what we're trying to say. Okay, thank you. Any further questions? All in favor? Carrie.
You.
Fire Department request, be resolved that council provide the three fire halls fifteen hundred dollars each for their annual Christmas party as a thank you for their excellent service provided. To our residents by our volunteer fire personnel. Could I have a mover, please? Council Siker, seconder. You should abstain. You should abstain. Now, Council H, Council Feeble Corn, you'll be abstaining?
Yes.
Any further comments? All in favor? Uh, Carrie. Now we have in camera. Be it resolved that council move in camera at nine thirty nine PM. To discuss matters that are in preliminary stages and respecting which discussion in public could prejudice the municipality's ability to carry out activities or negotiations. As well as legal and personnel issues. And be it further resolved that the members of council agree to keep in confidence. A matter that is discussed at a meeting that is close to the public under subsection one fifty two, three. And that the committee decides to keep confident until the matter is discussed at a meeting of the council. Or of a committee conducted in public. Could I have a mover, please? Deputy Mayor Dornbos, seconder. Council Morecki, all in favor? Carrie, we are in town.